Good afternoon. I would like to welcome everyone to the November 9th, 2023 work session of Henrico County School Board. The first item on our agenda this afternoon is the approval of the agenda. May I have a motion, board members?
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you so much Reverend Cooper. May I have a second?
Second. Oh, sorry.
Okay, who wants it?
A second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. The next item this afternoon is the closed session. May I please have a motion to go on a closed session?
I move that the school board go into closed session for the discussion of matters covered under items A1 and A8 of section 2.2-3711 of the Code of Virginia 1950 as amended pertaining to the assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific school board employees, consultation with legal counsel retained by the school board regarding the school board's rights and obligation under existing agreement requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. We will now go into closed session. We will reconvene this work session at the conclusion of our closed meeting. Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome back to the November 9th works 2023 work session of Henrico County School Board. The next item on our agenda this afternoon is the certification of closed session. Now please have a certification, I mean a motion to certify closed session.
I move that the school board certify by a recorded note that to the best of each school board member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act and identified in the motion authorizing the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shea. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Closed session has been certified. The next item this afternoon are items from the superintendent, Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you Chair Consala. Good afternoon, members of the board. The first item for which I'm seeking your approval are the approval of administrative
May I have a motion to approve administrative appointments?
I move that the school board approve the administrative appointment, the appointment of administrative personnel.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Reverend Cooper, you get that one. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Administrative personnel have been approved.
Thank you. The board has just approved Erin Trailer as the next principal at Twin Hickory Elementary School. And for the next item, we have a Destination 2025 Life Ready Learning Experiences overview for you, and Dr. Grant will come forward to get us started.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today, we would like to give you an update on the Division's effort toward providing students with life-ready learning experiences, which is a component of our Destination 2025. Dr. Thomas Farrell, Director of High Schools, and Mac Baten, Director of Career and Workforce Development, are here to give you an update.
Dr. Farrell?
Good afternoon. Our update today will focus on two goals of the strategic plan: academic, achieving academic excellence and leveraging our strength of diversity. Upon students' graduation, our goal is to ensure that every student has a plan in place for further education, employment, or military enlistment. Each spring, our senior students complete a senior survey, which collects information regarding the student's post-graduation intentions. Students complete this survey electronically through Major Clarity, which is HCPS's student-centered online platform designed to facilitate college and career readiness. For the 2023 graduating class, 77% of students reported plans to continue education through a four-year or two-year college, or they have other educational plans. 14% aimed to seek employment opportunities, and 2% were joining the military. In comparison to 2019, we are seeing a slightly smaller percentage of graduates pursuing post-secondary education and a larger percentage of students seeking employment after high school. This data highlights the diversity of student goals after leaving HCPS and provides direction for the school division on the learning opportunities needed to help students be successful. An objective of our strategic goal to achieve academic excellence is to provide students with opportunities to engage in rigorous learning experiences. Specifically, at the high school level, students have opportunities for advanced coursework, including enrollment in honors, IB, advanced placement, and dual enrollment courses that prepare them for post-secondary education. Additionally, workforce and career development course offerings are designed to contribute to the broad educational achievement of students, including the development of academic, technical, and work readiness skills. Our schools and partnerships support students and teachers in a variety of ways. We prioritize continuous professional learning for educators to ensure they are well-prepared to deliver challenging content effectively. Operating as a collaborative team, we place a strong emphasis on effective communication to ensure that students and their families fully comprehend the opportunities available in rigorous courses. Our dedication to student success extends to providing comprehensive support encompassing both academic and emotional assistance for those taking on challenging coursework. We understand the importance of executive functioning skills for student success and are working to actively integrate these skills into our classes, equipping students for academic independence. Furthermore, we foster a growth mindset, firmly believing that with the proper support, all students can excel in rigorous courses, promoting resilience and determination. By leveraging strategic partnerships with organizations such as the College Board, Equal Opportunity Schools, and J. Sergeant Reynolds, we have expanded dual enrollment and AP offerings, creating diverse pathways for students to access advanced coursework. Our ultimate commitment is to equip students with the knowledge and skills required not only to thrive in demanding academic environments, but also to establish a solid foundation for future success. Over the past five years, opportunities for students to participate in advanced courses have continued to increase. Since 2018, 2019, we have seen steady growth in the number of AP and dual enrollment course sections throughout the Division. The number of AP sections has increased 29%. Through the elimination of fees associated with dual enrollment courses and by working with high schools to identify teachers with the credentials to teach dual enrollment courses, the number of sections has increased by 39%. AP courses are offered at all nine high schools, as well as the Henrico Virtual Academy, and dual enrollment courses are offered in five of the nine high schools, as well as the A-Centers. Within the framework of Destination 2025, one of our key objectives is to ensure equitable enrollment in advanced courses. This slide demonstrates our progress in advanced coursework enrollment from the inception of our strategic plan in 2018, 2019, to 2022, 2023, focusing on data from each year's graduating class. Our ultimate goal is to guarantee that all graduating students have had the opportunity to access and enroll in advanced high school coursework. To analyze this data with respect to different student groups, we employ, we employ an equity index formula. This formula helps us to identify groups that may be under or overrepresented. An index score below one signifies underrepresentation, while a score above one indicates overrepresentation. When comparing the two years, it's evident that students with disabilities and English learners still face underrepresentation, although there have been improvements. Notably, there is more equitable representation among Black, Hispanic, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged students. At this time, I'll turn the presentation over to Mr. Baten.
Thank you, Dr. Farrell. Good afternoon. Life-ready learning begins early in elementary school, introducing students to Virginia's 17 career clusters. We guide students through a natural progression of career awareness, exploration, and preparation. In the early stages, career awareness exposes students to a variety of jobs. Middle school brings career exploration, where they plan their future, and high school focuses on career preparation for the chosen career. Work-based learning experiences enhance students' skills, aligning with the six Cs of our Henrico learner profile valued by employers. These experiences, from job shadowing to internships, provide real-world connections to coursework and boost employability. Our graphic shows low-intensity life-ready experiences in green and blue, while high-intensity, high-quality work-based learning experiences are in orange. Students can build upon low-intensity experiences using tools like Major Clarity for career research in grades four through eight. As they chart their academic career plan, they can participate in job shadowing and on-site tours in grades nine and 10, and engage in high-intensity experiences for career preparations in grades 11 and 12. High-quality work-based learning experiences enable students to apply classroom instruction in a real-world, business-or-service-oriented work environment. According to VDOE, work-based learning experiences must meet three criteria to be approved as high-quality. They must be related to a student's career goals and/or interests, be integrated with instructions, and performed in partnership with local businesses and organizations. Each high-quality work-based learning experience is further defined and must have a minimum duration in order to meet the graduation requirement. We're excited to share that for the 2022-23 school year, we reported 2,038 high-quality work-based learning experiences to VDOE. This number is expected to grow as we, as we refine our tracking processes and allocate additional staff resources to provide more students with valuable experiences in the comprehensive high schools. To expand these opportunities to a larger student base, this year, we've introduced service learning experiences in a, in all collaborative, college prep, and honors government classes. Service learning bridges classroom learning with real-world community experiences. Students participating in these experiences become more deeply involved with their local community, acquiring practical skills, nurturing their career and personal interests, and often helping them becoming more engaged citizens. High-quality work-based learning experiences are instrumental in preparing students for life by assisting them in making informed career decisions, connecting them with potential employers, and honing those essential skills needed for future employment.
At this time, Dr. Farrell, Mac Baten, and I will answer any questions you might have.
Thanks so much, Dr. Grant, Mr. Baten, Dr. Farrell. Board members, let's see, Mrs. Shea, questions, comments?
Thank you so much. Thank you for y'all's work in this space. I know this is somewhere where we're growing these opportunities for students, and that comes with challenges and finding partnerships and that sort of thing. So thank you for your continued work in this space. I'm delighted to see a greater variety of students engaging in a greater variety of advanced coursework. As we look at these numbers, as a board member, any way I can help support the elimination of barriers to help qualify teachers for dual enrollment, whether that be advocacy or anywhere, you know, I stand ready, and I think some of my other fellow board members stand ready to help Dr. Cashwell and you all figure out how to increase the dual enrollment opportunities for our students, as we talked about in the legislative agenda and other places. Just one question for you. Looking at the pie charts of our students self-reporting out of what their plans are after, after high school, I see the none or no response going from 6% and increasing to 7%. Do we have a feeling if that is an increase in no response or increase in no plans, or do we not know?
We're not totally sure. I believe it's no response. I believe these students that are indicated here with the 7% have not completed the survey.
Okay, thank you. I know that's hard. Seniors, their last week or two of high school, getting them to do anything is kind of like pulling teeth, so getting them to self-report out can be challenging, so, but I just didn't know if we had a feeling on that, so I appreciate that. And that's all from me.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Mrs. Ogborne?
I, just a couple things that jumped out at me was that the opportunity and growth mindset, the use of those words over and over again, because that's what it's all about. It's all about growth. But when I look at the slide that has, Mac, if you don't mind taking it to the slide with all the, the, there we go, with your whole long list, the next one, keep going, that one. When I look at this and I see apprenticeships, internships, externships, these are all, you know, and the job shadow, real-life experiences where a kid gets a chance to try something out, and as we have all said before, I think that is such a valuable time, that the kids get a chance to see if something works for them and if it doesn't. And that doesn't work is also just as important as it does, because it helps them fine-tune and focus on what they are interested in. But the next slide, that is an amazing number, and I'm curious, this one, how does that compare with the past, Mac? I mean, are we, obviously, that's a, that's a 2,000-plus is a huge number of, of opportunities for our kids, but how are we, how are we doing in the past, and what's the trajectory? I'm curious.
We are definitely going up. In the past, we primarily focused on A-Center students. Now we're broadening, broadening that lens and looking at it from a, you know, a K-12 perspective, but for all students, and making sure all students have that same option to try something and find out, hey, this is not what I thought it was, or what I was hoping it would be. So I think you're going to see this number continue to grow as we continue to fine-tune the opportunities and work that into our students' schedule, so they have the opportunity to see this as a valuable tool for them in their career preparation.
Well, and, you know, we've talked about this before. We've had parents reach out and say how appreciative they are later on when their kids are in college. They were able to eliminate some things, and it actually helps them graduate in four years, not extend, not change, you know, majors, things like that. So to me, this is just an amazing list of opportunities for our kids. So I do hope we keep growing it. It's, it's something I wish I'd had that opportunity for when I was growing up, but I mean, so anyway, I appreciate all the hard work in the area. Just like Marcy said, it is continued good work on y'all's part, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Ms. Atkins?
Good afternoon. This was well done. I'm interested if we could go to the, the slide, I believe it had the pie chart. Specifically wanted to dive into the military data and what we're seeing here, and would love to know more about what we're doing to boost our efforts around military and making sure that we are sharing the opportunity, not only to participate, but hands-on, what do students or what other students that participated, what were their experiences? Because it is becoming a bit shocking, because after 2%, you're 1%, does the program dissolve? So I'm interested in learning what we're doing to boost efforts? What are you hearing from students regarding their interest in the military? Because we can't decline much more without dissolving it, and then there's no opportunity. So I'd love to learn more.
Sure. So I don't have specifics on what students are saying. That's information we could gather from the schools. But in terms of all of our high school programs, they bring in representation from the military to recruit students throughout the school year, facilitated through school counseling. So our students have access to military recruiters pretty much throughout the entire school year. And when we have our college and career fairs, there's representation from the military in that regard. I can say for certain if we've brought students who graduated, who are now in the military, back to schools, that's something that we can look at with our high schools to see if there's some opportunities there. But we do try to expose our students to military recruiters in the same way that we expose them to colleges and universities, and also various job opportunities.
Thank you for sharing that. So I happen to have run into a few that are in the military that were exposed through JROTC. And I think one of the better ways for students to truly understand what JRTC is and what it means to enlist is to bring some folks that graduated from Henrico County Public Schools to chat, just as we do with our nursing program. They get to talk to nurses already in the field. I think our students would benefit from our first folks in service to ask questions and so forth and so on. The other question is, there's a certain number, and I don't know specifics, so maybe you can help me here, but I'm aware there is a certain number that the school division has to meet in order for the program to remain. Can you give me some insight into that?
Yes, ma'am. The contracts are basically written, it's 10% of the student enrollment or 100 students for the students, and if not, then the programs are put on probation. I would, would like to add to that piece of the puzzle, something that we are implementing as we move forward, and it was in place prior to COVID, but it kind of went away. Some of you may remember, there was a group called Blue Star Mothers that celebrated the students that went into the military after high school. That went away during COVID. We're actually planning on bringing that back this year, and, because that has kind of the same impact as Signing Day does for students going to the world of work. It brings attention to the, the great opportunities that the military brings to the table for these students who choose to choose that pathway as their career goals.
Thank you for sharing that, because that program, I believe, and you can keep me honest later, one of the things that the parents and guardians and families enjoyed was getting their college paid. It is another avenue financially, because not every child is a straight A. And then we have service-oriented children that just want to work, and they just want our gifts, service, and they want to share their gifts in that space of helping our country. So I'm very pleased to hear that we are bringing that back. I would like to learn how we're bringing that back, and if needed, I can share some of those stories as well. Are we currently on probation? Because I'm looking at 2%.
This, and I just wanted to point out for additional clarity here, this is not enrollment in JROTC. These are students who report they're going into the military once they leave us. So many students who are enrolled in JROTC get great benefits from the program, but may not choose to then enlist in the military. They may be going to college or right into the workforce in another profession, so I just wanted a point of clarity. So I understand your concern based on the data. This is not reflective of our JROTC enrollment. This is students leaving us going post-secondary.
So can you also answer if we're on probation or not?
You could speak to the programs, and I can provide you a list by school of JROTC.
Perfect. It's important to know, because if we are on probation, I certainly would want to make sure that we're doing all we can before it dissolves.
Absolutely.
So I appreciate that. I think Slide 7, talking about executive functioning skills, so similarly those abilities to handle goal setting and time management and all of those things. I'd love to learn and dive deeper into understanding how we're helping our staff and our teachers in the space of students with differences, learning differences, developmental differences. What are we doing to help staff in that space on executive functioning skills? And I love that you have that bullet there and that you phrased it that way, so that we can really dive deeper and learn what that means.
Right. So it starts with professional learning. We talk about, you know, students with disabilities, for example. Our Exceptional Education Department provides professional learning to teachers throughout the course of the school year, not just on instruction, but making sure that we are providing those students with what they need to be successful in our most rigorous courses. And in terms of the executive functioning, functioning skills, it really boils down to, you know, us starting in ninth grade with recognizing, you know, where students may have some challenges, whether it's time management, you know, note-taking, study habits. And we incorporate those things into our classes, because those are some of the things that we've identified as skills necessary for students to be successful in our most rigorous courses. So professional learning, district level, professional learning at the school level, and also working with individual students in terms of what their needs are. Over the last few years, we've really done an excellent job of working with individual students and meeting their specific needs. So that's something I'm very proud of.
As you should be. And I guess this is a two-part, so when we're thinking about the, the hands-on part, which is also, of course, tied to that goal setting and time management pieces, how are we memorializing it in that particular space to share with families? So families, of course, get their grades, they get updates from teachers, but how are we informing them on that specific area of that executive functioning skill? Here are some of the ways that your child is goal-setting, so that at home, they're able to complement it. How are we doing that?
Right. I think there's some room for growth in that area on a high school level, so that's something that we can definitely talk about doing more of.
Thank y'all so much. I did have one more. I also, I like the message, I think, let me see what slide this is. Might be Slide 14, Own Your Journey. It's on one of these slides here, and, you know, I think it really encourages individuals to be proactive. It's also a call for self-empowerment and accountability, and one thing to consider, that little, that little teeny tagline of "Own Your Journey" is something that we might want to consider putting on other materials as we transition and become more aggressive academically. It's a very short way to get our children empowered, to be held accountable, because you're going to own where you're going and your path, and I think it fits well here. So from a marketing perspective, I think that tagline might work well in other spaces. So thank you so much, and thank you for all that you do.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just have two quick questions. So on Slide 7, the Equity Index Advanced Coursework, I want to commend you all, commend us, Dr. Cashwell, because there has been marked improvements in moving the needle in our five of our underrepresented groups, Black, Hispanic, students with disabilities, English learners, and economically disadvantaged. Although there's still much work to be done to help move the needle further for all these groups, I want to applaud Dr. Cashwell as well as you all for, first of all, recognizing disparities exist, implementing recommendations from our board, and providing an update regarding the data. Now, my question is, could you share with us an example of a specific interventions that have been put in place to improve access for our underrepresented students in advanced courses?
Sure. So it starts with, you know, making sure that we have opportunities by offering the courses. Our schools do a great job with our school counselors, teachers, and also administrators, again, in working with individual students, making sure that if they have the potential, we identify them for those rigorous course opportunities. We talk to students individually, we talk to families individually to, you know, share the opportunities and the benefits of taking those rigorous courses. And we've also put some structures in place to support students who are willing to take a chance if they've not taken an advanced course. We work collaboratively to ensure that if a student does need success, we kind of take them through our intervention process. So it's not just, you know, students who are not meeting the mark in, you know, college prep classes, but we take the same approach with students who are not meeting the mark in, in advanced courses, because we want them to be successful. So one, it starts with communication and making sure that there's an awareness about the courses that exist at each of our high schools. And then, you know, we, we spend time specifically with parents and students to, you know, provide further education on the types of courses that their students may be taking, and why we feel the course is a good fit. And once they're into classes, our teachers work collaboratively with our counselors and administrators to establish plans for success for each individual student.
So, so I appreciate that, because what it speaks to, speaks to the individuality of our students and the specificity of their needs, so thank you for that. Second question is, since the slide combines all of our advanced coursework and isn't broken down by honors, AP, IB, and dual enrollment, could you share with us in which areas we may have seen the most improvement, and in which areas we still have significant opportunities to make improvement?
So I would say we've seen a tremendous So I would say we've seen a tremendous amount of growth in our AP and also dual enrollment. We have room for growth with dual enrollment in terms of, you know, expanding opportunities for students of all of our non-comprehensive high schools to be able to take those courses. And we're doing some work there to identify teachers who have the credentials and those who are close and providing support to them to ensure that, you know, from a financial standpoint, they can take those required courses to be able to teach those classes in our high schools.
Well, I'm glad you did that because that segues into my last kind of question because I received many questions from constituents asking about expansion of the dual enrollment program from the High Tech Academy at the A Center, at Holland Springs, to other schools and divisions. The reason being, in terms of equity, many have graduated from this program, have shared with me the cost savings they've experienced as a student, as a parent and guardian, as it relates to the rising cost of higher education as we know. And so for our families with limited means this is a game changer. So the fact that we are cognizant of that and we're conscious in our challenge to, you know, have teachers for this program. So if we get more teachers, how is our scalability of increasing these opportunities?
Pretty good. If we can get more teachers to meet the requirements, absolutely. And that's our goal. Every year, we're working with our high schools to identify those teachers, again, who either have the credentials or who are very close. And we are, you know, making sure that they have what they need in order to teach those courses. I'm happy to say that as of today, we have another high school coming on board with offering dual enrollment next year and possibly another. So it is a goal of ours to have dual enrollment in every single high school.
I was recently with a group of people and a young lady at my church, I was blessed to go to two graduations within a week's timeframe. She graduated from Holland Springs with her associate's degree from Reynolds. I was at that graduation as well as Holland Springs, and she's now a sophomore to Women Mary, right? A junior, actually, rather. So she's two years in, fresh out of high school, and it was a moment of pride because she represents what this program represents. And so, I mean, for me, and I echo what Ms. Shea said in regards to the resources that we are putting in place to assist our teachers in getting that. So anything we can do, you know, and more to increase opportunities and capacity is just imperative. Thank you. That's it for me.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. I really would like to just tag on to what Reverend Cooper just said because what I wrote down was five of our nine high schools have it. That means four of our high schools don't. And then which high schools are coming online next year, Dr. Farrell? Because it troubles me, it does trouble me that not all nine, anytime I hear that we don't have it across Henrico Schools, it does trouble me.
Well, I do want to make one point. All students have access to apply to our A C, our academies where they can be fully duly enrolled and as Reverend Cooper pointed out, graduate with an associate's degree. But we want to make sure that perhaps students don't want the full dual enrollment package. They want to be able to take individual courses. That's what we're talking about. So this would mean individual dual enrollment courses at every high school. No, I mean, we hear you and that is why we have been ramping up that effort. So there are ways to take advantage of dual enrollment outside of your comprehensive high school, but we want to make sure, for all students, but we want to make sure that it's.
You would either have to be in one of our centers or in CTE to do so, right? To be dual enrolled?
Fully, no, not if you want individual courses. That's the associate's degree program.
But if you want individual courses, you cannot currently access that type of dual enrollment across Henrico County Public Schools, high schools, correct?
Currently. Because again, the requirements to teach dual enrollment are not the same as teaching other courses. So that's what it really boils down to. As we identify teachers who are close and who would like to, you know, take the few classes that they need in order to be fully certified to teach dual enrollment, we'll work with them to ensure that they can, you know, take those classes. So we would love to see dual enrollment courses at every high school, and we're working to get there.
And just to let you know, teachers must have a master's degree plus 18 credit hours in order to teach dual enrollment.
Thank you for saying that again on the record. No, I mean, we all agree, it's a legislative priority, but just when you hear, when you hear that as a board member, for anybody listening, we're working toward it.
Well, and I would say similarly with AP courses, right? So sometimes it's interest-based, sometimes it's, you know, when it comes to, and sort of looking back to the beginning of our work towards the Strategic Plan Destination 2025 and mapping out what are the barriers to making sure more students have opportunities to be in advanced courses, whether they be honors, AP, IB, dual enrollment, is this idea that if it's not available to you in your comprehensive high school setting, that is a barrier in and of itself? And so while there are other barriers, we've been swiftly removing that, spreading that access. So there are options. And it may be a student chooses, you know, an AP course instead of a dual enrollment course, but we want to make sure that there are options for students.
And then can someone speak to me a little bit more about Slide 7, the six, let me see. I think it's Slide 7 with the service-based learning experiences. No, not Slide 7. 10. The service learning, 505, we added that. When did we add service, service learning?
Excuse me, when did we add?
When did we add that?
This year is when we started adding that into the government classes.
Okay. And then how is that captured? Because if I remember correctly, last month, we had college career readiness at the last meeting, and this is really college career readiness, part two?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct? So it was just added this year. So other high schools, has it not fully rolled out at other high schools?
It's now going into the other, it started actually piloted at Freeman last year, and now it's rolled out to all the high schools through the government program.
Okay. So all high school students through the government class this year have the opportunity for that?
Yes, ma'am. And we're actually looking at moving forward because it's trying to capture something similar at the ninth grade level to make sure the students still have this opportunity at both the ninth and the 12th grade level.
Okay. And do we have, I heard tracking, and do we have support? I heard tracking and employee, and the resources to do so. We have the tracking mechanism and do we have the resources to properly execute the plan?
We are working on reallocating some of our resources to make sure that we have the needed human resources to follow up and help our teachers understand what it's involved as far as the tracking. And as I said earlier, there's, it's multiple definitions from the state. What's an internship? What's an externship? I believe, and I even get those confused. You would think an internship is less than an externship, but it's the reverse. So it's kind of interesting, the state definitions, but we're, part of it is teaching, helping our teachers and students understand the definitions and then also providing the resources, connecting the classes to the business partners because the teacher who is teaching, they need to know, okay, where do I go look for this? Major Clarity's been a huge help because it's a resource. Their students go out, I'm interested in being an airplane pilot. So all the resources under that career pathway are listed in Major Clarity, and the extra resources are helping make sure those job opportunities are in Major Clarity where our students have access to.
Is there any need with, is there, are there any opportunities for us as the board to hear, do you need resources with the budget season coming? What resources do we need or do we have them?
We are hoping to add additional support that can work directly with their schools. Have actually put that in as a request for our budget, so.
All right. Well, thank you so much. Thank you for this presentation. Dr. Cashwell.
Sticking with the theme of opportunities for our students, we'll now have a review of proposed changes to our H C P S 2024-2025 Planning Guide and Academic and Career Planning Materials. The board's previously been provided an executive summary, an opportunity to review those proposed changes. We'll be seeking your approval of that guide at our monthly meeting today, but wanted to provide an overview and offer an opportunity for questions.
Okay. Good afternoon again, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. With me this afternoon is Liz Parker, Director of Student Support and Wellness. Together, we will present an overview of the 2425 H C P S Planning Guide for the board's approval, as well as share an update of H C P S expanded academic career planning resources and support. In direct alignment with Destination 2025, academic and career planning continues to be an implementation driver for achieving academic excellence. In addition, careful and thoughtful academic and career planning will assist all students in developing the knowledge, skills, and attributes necessary to accomplish their life-ready Before we move on, we would like to thank the many different departments, teams, and stakeholder groups, as shown on the screen, that met, reviewed information, and provided input over a period of months in order to develop the H C P S Planning Guide proposed this afternoon. And now I would turn the remainder of the presentation over to Liz Parker, who will highlight proposed formatting and content revisions for the 2425 H C P S Planning Guide, which we will ask for board approval.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. Today's proposed revisions to the 2024-25 H C P S Planning Guide remain an important piece of a much larger puzzle that, when put together, provides H C P S students with access to coursework and learning experiences that allow them to meet their goals, their individual academic goals, graduate life-ready, and be prepared for multiple post-secondary pathways that lead to their vision of success in today's rapidly evolving world of work. Now in its fifth year, the H C P S Online Planning Guide remains to be a valuable resource and can be accessed anytime, anywhere, from any device, including all H C P S-issued laptops provided to students annually. As a reminder, Wi-Fi hotspot devices are also available for students who may not have home internet access. The Online Planning Guide remains user-friendly, can be translated into 104 different languages, and includes a simple search function that allows users to quickly search the entire H C P S course database by course title, course number, or subject area. Additionally, students and families can quickly navigate from the homepage directly to specific sections of interest, such as diploma requirements or course descriptions. And those desiring a more guided experience can navigate through the Planning Guide by utilizing the simple three-step career development process shown here. To date, we're pleased to share that the Online H C P S Planning Guide averages over 100,000 total page views annually, with peak page views occurring in November through January, which coincides with our course request timeline and targeted academic planning Each year, the H C P S Planning Guide works to enhance the site with accessibility and equity considerations at the forefront, and responding to stakeholder feedback is always a priority when proposing revisions. This year, one reoccurring request was for a way to provide students and families with clear instructions on how they can view their own progress towards meeting the current advanced studies, standard and applied studies diploma requirements already included on the Planning Guide site. With that in mind, the Choose a Diploma page of the Planning Guide, as shown here, was updated to include a Graduation Plan Progress button directly linking students and families to an introduction of the Graduation Plan Progress feature that was launched in the Power School Parent Portal last spring. Clear step-by-step instructions and a video tutorial for accessing, logging into, and navigating the Graduation Plan Progress feature in Power School is also included to provide an additional layer of support for H C P S students and families seeking to not only learn about state requirements for the diploma, but to clearly understand how their own progress helps them to meet these requirements. This site update further positions the 2425 Planning Guide as a valuable, full-service academic and career planning tool for H C P S students and families alike. Of equal importance, a number of specific content changes and revisions were proposed for the 2425 Planning Guide. In an effort to provide the board and the school community with time to thoughtfully review each of these proposed updates and revisions, a detailed executive summary, as outlined on this slide, was provided in advance to the school board and was made available to the public in board docs. These proposed revisions ensure that the 2425 Planning Guide remains in alignment with the Virginia Department of Education Standards of Accreditation, as well as H C P S school board policy, and includes programmatic updates, as well as updates to course offerings, course titles, course descriptions, and typical pathways across content areas. We will be asking the board to approve the proposed revisions detailed in the executive summary during this evening's monthly meeting. We'll now turn our attention to an update on H C P S's partnership with Major Clarity, and then take a look at how H C P S is expanding its use of both Major Clarity, existing curriculum, and a new resource to further support student college and career readiness and family engagement with the academic and career planning process. As a reminder, in 2021, H C P S partnered with Major Clarity, a student-driven, online college and career readiness platform designed to help all students in grades four through 12 discover future careers aligned with their interests and abilities and merge their career exploration with academic planning. Now, in its third year of implementation, approximately 30,000, or 87% of H C P S students in grades four through 12 have accessed their Major Clarity account, completed career inventories, engaged in career exploration, and participated in career-aligned academic planning within the platform. In fact, H C P S's continued commitment to engaging students and families with this tool earns the Major Clarity Power User Status designation for the school year, or for the 2223 school year, one of the highest recognitions awarded to top-tier district users nationwide. In addition to high utilization and student engagement rates in the Major Clarity platform, this past year, 104 H C P S high school students exceeded initial implementation expectations by successfully completing a competency-based career readiness micro credential available exclusively in the Major Clarity platform. Built in partnership with leading employers and educational institutions, Major Clarity's micro credentials provide valuable tools for next-level career exploration while giving students a competitive edge when applying for post-secondary opportunities. And while continuing to utilize Major Clarity to drive career exploration and academic planning, H C P S's Workforce and Career Development Department recently expanded to student access to college and career readiness opportunities by building out and activating the platform's work-based learning feature. As a result, all H C P S students and their families can now utilize Major Clarity's work-based learning section to find local, high-quality work-based learning experiences, as recognized by the Virginia Department of Education, that match one or more of their preferred career paths. Additionally, all posted work-based learning experiences are updated in real time. In fact, today, the work-based learning feature in Major Clarity highlights over 74 different local opportunities, and new opportunities are added daily. The new work-based learning feature also provides students with the ability to learn more about potential employers through their work-based learning partner profiles, favorite any opportunities they'd like to save for later, start the application process to take advantage of one of these experiences, and track and manage new or existing work-based learning experiences all in one place. Finally, the work-based learning feature can easily be accessed directly from the student Major Clarity account, and the addition of this feature directly supports our year-three goal of increasing overall student, staff, and family engagement with Major Clarity while promoting multiple post-secondary pathways. As Mr. Beaton shared minutes ago, service learning, work-based learning standards in alignment with the National Youth Leadership Council's K-12 standards for quality service learning have now been embedded into the curriculum of all Virginia and U.S. government courses throughout the school division, ensuring that every student has the opportunity to participate in at least one high-quality work-based learning experience prior to graduation. Additionally, successful service learning completion assists students in meeting a graduation requirement of both the standard and advanced studies diploma, while also providing a credit towards the V D O E School Quality, College, Career, and Civics Readiness As shown this afternoon, H C P S is committed to promoting and supporting students as they discover and pursue multiple post-secondary pathways. And for students whose post-secondary goals include pursuing a two- or four-year degree from a college or university, H C P S's college advisement and admission support has recently evolved to has recently evolved to include a partnership with CollegeVine, the world's largest network dedicated to helping students discover and get accepted to schools that best match their interests, preferences, and goals. Now, HCPS students have the opportunity to create a professional profile in CollegeVine, which they can share with their school counselor and parents and guardians, showcasing their academic and extracurricular achievements, school preferences, and more. Through this profile, students can connect directly with a network of experienced college advisors for additional support outside of school. And with thousands of colleges and universities already actively engaged with the platform, student profiles provide an avenue for all students to get discovered by and connect directly to verified admissions officers from schools of their choice, as well as to receive and manage direct scholarship awards and offers of admission from colleges that are likely to be a great fit. School counseling departments look forward to communicating additional information and details about CollegeVine to students and families in the upcoming weeks. Through its new partnership with CollegeVine, its expanded use of the Major Clarity platform, increased access to high-quality work-based learning experiences for all students, and the proposed revisions to the 2425 HCPS Planning Guide, it's clear to see that HCPS remains committed to collaboratively supporting students and families throughout their academic and career planning journey. And to ensure that students and families are aware of the information, updates, and expanded tools that have been shared today, a communication plan has been established that includes both the division and school-level communication, some of which has already begun. That communication will also highlight the next steps and upcoming dates shown here to assist all students entering grades six through 12 in the 2425 school year and their families in preparing for the two-week HCPS Course Request Window, set to open January 8 and run through January 22. The Course Request Window now includes two full weeks and weekends, further ensuring that students and families have the time they need for careful course planning and selection with school support. School-specific details and information about the Course Request process will be communicated by the school directly to students, parents, and guardians. And school counselors are available in every school to answer questions, address concerns, and work in partnership with families to support all HCPS students in identifying, planning for, and meeting their educational and career goals.
Thank you for providing this opportunity to share the proposed revisions for the 2425 Planning Guide and details about expanded college and career readiness resources, experiences, and initiatives, as we continue to work to support HCPS students in discovering their future careers and pathways that can make them a reality. At this time, Liz Parker and I are here to ask, answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you so much, Dr. Grant, Ms. Parker, Reverend Cooper.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. So, on Slide 6, the new site update regarding school and parent guardian communication on student progress. This is such a critical tool because it helps providing additional oversight for our student-parent guardians in being able to monitor their students' progress in earning the standard credits needed for a standard degree, Advanced Studies Diploma, and/or Applied Studies Diploma. My question is about the Applied Studies Diploma. Since this is used as a tool to help our students decide which diploma will help with their educational and career goals post-high school, does it include the full scope of information regarding limitations associated with that track, such as not being able to qualify for financial aid if you graduate with that diploma?
So, information about the Applied Studies Diploma lives on the Planning Guide site itself and links specifically to the Virginia Department of Education site as well. That provides a lot of details about the Applied Studies Diploma, which, again, is a diploma in which a student, it would require a student to have an IEP, Individual Education Plan, to pursue the Applied Studies Diploma.
Right, I'm conscious of that. So, again, are we making sure that it's clear? I mean, I've had, thank you, because there have been those who've gotten that degree distinction, and then they didn't know that they did not qualify for financial aid. And that's definitely something we want to make sure that is part of. And then, secondly, could you share about, more about the Career Readiness Microcredential on Slide 9?
Yes.
I'm excited about this because it's a game changer for our students. It'll help make their college admission application more competitive. It may expand opportunities to complete for scholarships and grants and for unemployed students post-graduation. This would help a resume booster in helping to negotiate a higher salary. It seems as though the seven microcredentials listed on Slide 9 are an example of the offerings that we do offer, correct? They're the real ones?
These are the seven that are offered and that HCPS students have completed.
Thank you. Quick question on that. Can you share how these particular microcredentials were selected?
So, these were selected by the platform itself through its partnerships with educational institutions and various companies around the nation.
So, we don't have the opportunity to kind of make a decision?
We can certainly look into that.
Okay. On Slide 12, quickly, College Advisement and Admissions. Only question I have on this, are community colleges and private colleges represented in CollegeVine?
They are, yes, as are HBCUs and a variety of other smaller and larger colleges, two- and four-year colleges as well.
Thank you for that. If a student transfers out of Henrico Public Schools and moves to a new school system or becomes homeschooled, how would access to the information in Major Clarity look for them?
Yes. So, students have access to Major Clarity for a number of years upon graduation. If the student transfers out of HCPS schools, they no longer can access the platform, but all of their information stays in the platform. And then, if a student were to transfer back, everything is there for them.
No, I appreciate that. Last question for me, it's not really a question, it's a comment. So, on Slide 13, I'm excited to see the exhaustive list of the communication plan communicating with our families about this guide. I would love to make sure that this information may also be in our public libraries, also in the principal's newsletter message. It includes all of middle school feeder schools and house schools. I want to make sure our athletic departments are communicating this information because they are often the touch point for many of our students. And then, maybe lastly, want to make sure that our PTAs are part of this communication as well. So, thank you so much for this.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. That's it for me, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Atkins. Questions and comments?
Yes. So, congratulations on 87% student engagement. That's a hand clap. So wonderful there. I have some very specific questions. I'm going to just condense them down to two, however. So, as you scroll down and go to Maggie L. Walker Governor's School for Government and International Studies, it's listed that Henrico Virtual Academy students will be grouped with their zoned middle school. Can you help me understand that? And it might be better to actually go to that slide to see it. I want to better understand how a student or family would navigate that.
Sure, I believe.
If that's accurate.
It's in the actual Planning Guide.
Yes, it's in the Planning Guide as well as in the executive summary, I believe.
Is that accurate that?
It is accurate. That's correct. So, HVA students apply and are considered within those application pools.
So, the question is, I hear you. And so, HVA students that participate online, how do they participate? Are we providing someone online to provide the service? Or am I completely not getting it because I'm not understanding how that works?
No, that's a great question. And so, students who are accepted into Maggie L. Walker's Governor's School attend Maggie L. Walker's Governor's School in person at Maggie L. Walker.
So, how would a virtual person that does not attend in person at Maggie Walker participate?
They would be choosing to apply to. So, in other words, a student who happens to be enrolled at HVA may choose upon getting to the high school transition to apply for something other than HVA. And they are eligible, like students who are in-person at any other school, to apply for Maggie Walker or other specialty centers. And this has to do with, in other words, they're applying to be a student in-person at Maggie Walker.
Correct. I do not believe that, go ahead.
I think the grouping pertains to, correct me if I'm wrong.
Application process.
The application process that every middle school is guaranteed, is it one or two students? Is it two students? Every middle school is guaranteed two students to get admitted to Maggie Walker. And then, the net of that is filling the rest.
Yes, no, that's correct. And so, I don't believe at this time Maggie Walker has a fully virtual option for students to attend.
So, now you're getting to where, so now we're landing the plane.
Yes.
Maggie Walker does not have a virtual academy. So, if we're telling a virtual academy that they can participate with only two slots, how does that work?
They would get information about all of the specialty center applications. So, when that window of opportunity opens for all middle schoolers, including HVA middle schoolers, they then make the choice if they'd like to apply to any of the centers, including Maggie Walker.
In person or remain virtual at HVA.
Which means they have to leave HVA.
Correct.
Right, just like you would leave your regular middle school to go to the high school.
I mean, and I think Ms. Atkins brings up a good point. It's a little confusing the way it's written.
Oh, good to know.
Because when she was showing him, that doesn't look right. And so, I mean, I can imagine that there might be some confusion about this. So, I would agree with you. A little bit of rewording or explanation is needed to make this make quite perfect.
Absolutely. And that's the beauty of an online planning guide, because we can make those adjustments in real time.
Wonderful.
And the specialty center process itself is comprehensive and involved, I mean, to your point. And the schools, middle schools, are prepared to assist students and families through that, whether they're looking at Maggie Walker or any of the other options, that whole application window. They get quite a bit of guidance, but we can make sure that's very clear.
Their school counselors walk them through that process.
But we'll certainly take a look at that language.
Thank you so much. The other area that we might want to take another look at is American Sign Language for Henrico Virtual Academy. So, very similar. We don't have to go into another discussion. But take a look at how that's being navigated online. I think that it's also confusing and similar to this discussion that we're having. And that would be beneficial for folks to have better clarity on how to do that because it's not just, I apply at Maggie Walker. It's a whole family shift. You have to be in person. So, thank you so much for that. The other question I have is around Bub, the Backyard Urban Garden. And so, I'm going to try to find it on here. I did not copy and paste the entire piece. But the question I have in navigating that online is some of the pieces to participate, really, I believe, is dependent upon having the garden, having some of those things. Online, is it really, truly that any middle school can participate in that, or no? The reason I'm asking is because of the navigation online. So, I want to make sure we're very clear that that's available.
So, on the course description page, when folks are on the course description page, it very clearly states that their, that course offerings are dependent upon variable factors, and not all schools offer all courses, if that makes sense. And so.
That's another one. You might want to look at the wording because backyard urban gardening is certainly, I believe, dependent upon some other factors. It's not at every middle school, however. Take a look at the wording to make sure that that's very clear. So, just a few things for consideration.
And it's also based on interest level of that particular middle school.
Fantastic. Thank you. And that's the point because the schools that have the framework or that foundation will probably have a higher level of interest because they see it. And not all schools have the gardens, right? And so, just for consideration, please take a look at the wording to make sure that it's clear so that someone wouldn't sign up for something that a school wouldn't have a high interest in, therefore, it would not exist.
Correct.
All right. And so, that's all that I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Ms. Augper.
Thank you. Obviously, clarity, transparency, the easier this is to read and understand from our constituents and our students and families, the better. And so, that's one reason when I'm looking at the usability, the user-friendly aspect that you talked about, I find to be such a strength, and especially having it available in multiple languages. I mean, I think back to the one we used to produce in paper. You know, remember back in the Dark Ages, we used to do that. And so, making this much more user-friendly, but also, the beauty of it is that we could update it and change it as we need to, as we find little things that we can tweak like this. But I also really appreciate being able, for a student and family, to check on a student's progress towards graduation. Such a valuable tool to keep them on track. And to me, this is just sort of the epitome of using all the tools at our disposal in a way that is just so productive and easy for our families. So, I appreciate that. But also, the career readiness, the career planning aspect of this, how does a student really get the most out of that, would you say, as far as using the Planning Guide? Because that's an incredible amount of usage. But do we find it's more for planning their coursework? Or is it for that career planning exploration, do you think?
It can be, it's all of the above. And Major Clarity is updated to reflect our annual revisions to the Planning Guide. So, while students are actually creating their academic career plan, courses are mapped into Major Clarity in alignment with our Academic Planning Guide. So, they can look at course descriptions on the Planning Guide and, in the same time, select those courses in their academic career plan through Major Clarity.
That's awesome. Okay. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Augper. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you so much. I also want to thank your team and everybody who took time to put together the executive summary. Very, very helpful. And then, you know, when clicking through into the links of the actual document, you can see how many people and how many teams have gone in and done multiple revisions to make it as digestible as possible. So, thank you. All of the many hours of work show in the product. So, thank you. Yeah, five stars for the executive review, five out of five. Thank you. I echo my colleagues on making this as digestible as possible. This is overwhelming for families. Even those of us who are involved in the School Division and have worked in the School Division, it's still overwhelming. I think parents and families often have this panic of like, if I choose the wrong thing, my child is forever on the wrong path, right? And so, there's a lot of anxiety with choosing coursework. So, I love the additions to make it more digestible, to make it accessible in multiple languages. All very, very helpful. I love to see all of the expanded offerings we have. I mean, we offer so many things in Henrico. And some of the additions, PTOT, firefighting, environmental physics, unmanned aircraft systems. I mean, it's incredible. And I think the flip side of that goes back to that digestibility. Because we offer so many things, it can be hard to pick, you know, or know what you can pick, to Ms. Atkins's point. So, excited to see that. Really excited about this new CollegeVine piece, that it's really looking at finding the best fit for our kids. I think that's so important. There is more than one college in Virginia, like sometimes. The reality of that is lost. So, really finding the best fit. And I also, the fact that you said that it connects with both two- and four-year colleges, that is so important to our mission, our triple E mission, and finding the right fit for kids. I'm really glad to see that this CollegeVine piece is dovetailing with that so nicely and not... Anyway, you know what I'm saying. One question I do have, and Dr. Cashwell, if you need to report back to me on this at a later time, that's fine. I noticed we're adding ASL 2. So, that makes me think that the pilot of ASL 1 went well this year. Is that, do we have any information about that?
Yes, that's correct.
Will we be able to offer that at more high schools next year? I think we piloted it at three this year.
So, ASL is offered through the Henrico Virtual Academy, but students from any high school across the division can take it virtually.
That's amazing. I am really excited to hear that. I've had some parents in my district with particular advocacy around this. Sometimes ASL is accessible for students which other foreign languages are challenging because of dyslexia or other types of learning. And so, being able to provide our students with a foreign language that might be more accessible than traditional so that they can get that advanced diploma for college application, that's just looking at barriers and boundaries in a new way. And so... And so I really appreciate that. And the fact of, you know, the service that is to our hearing impaired community, right? And bringing that to the forefront in terms of having more citizens who are, have that capability and have that linguistic ability in ASL. So thank you. I'm glad, I'm really excited to see that. And that's all for me.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. I have a question. When, when I look at the data and how many of our students get advanced diplomas, do you need, you don't, you do not need an advanced diploma to go to college, correct?
That's correct.
What is the advantage of getting an advanced diploma?
So if one pursues post-secondary education, every, every college has their own requirements, so I can't speak for all colleges and universities. But depending on the courses that you've taken while in high school, you either do or do not have to take those courses again when you are at college. And so with the advanced diploma, often students don't then need to repeat a world language when they go to college if they choose not to. But different colleges have different requirements, and so I can't have-- Some colleges would require course completion that aligns with an advanced studies diploma, but not all colleges. Some require course completion that would align with a standard diploma. So it really just depends on what you're looking to do and what your post-secondary goals are that should be driving your diploma choice.
I appreciate, I appreciate you taking time to answer that question, because when I listen to students and what they want to do, so many of them want to participate in some of our CTE classes. And there's not maybe room for that because of their advanced diploma and what they're being, you know, the guidance they're receiving perhaps. So I appreciate you answering that question for me. And then I would also like to thank you, as Ms. Ogbonn did, for the graduation progress tracking in Power School. I believe I asked for it last year, so I'm so excited to see it. Where are we, though, in getting verified credit? Where are we on the verified credit? Because that's really important for parents as well, to understand, we may have some client, we may have the classes, but not necessarily the verified credit. And of course, this doesn't really apply to everyone, but for those parents who may not have the verified, their students may not have the verified credits, it's life-altering in terms of stress, trying to get their students across the stage for graduation. So where are we on that?
So Power School at this time, that's not a feature or function of the graduation plan progress feature that Power School makes available, but we can certainly continue to request that they consider what that might look like.
Thank you so much. And then that's all I had. Thank you so much for this presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Grant probably feels like she's living at the podium, so you need to get a drink or catch your breath.
I'm good.
She's on again, along with several other team members. But the next presentation, staff are so pleased to provide an update on expansion of middle school programming to further, further support our college and career readiness of students and of course, our life-ready promise, so.
Okay, again, today we will present to you an exciting new option beginning the 24-25 school year. Middle School Center for Innovation. Our strategic plan, Destination 2025, provides a roadmap for student success and growth. We are committed to ensuring that all students have multiple pathways to college and career readiness and opportunities to engage in rigorous learning experiences that best meet the unique learning styles. Supporting that commitment, this center would be Henrico's first middle school program focused on innovation, design thinking, and entrepreneurship. A planning team has been working for some time to bring this middle school program to life. Dr. Dea Champ, Director of Middle School Education, will give us an overview.
Thank you, Dr. Grant. We are excited to introduce new innovative options for middle school students. We have worked to ensure that all middle school students have high-quality programming and exploratory options, but this adds yet another unique learning experience for our students. Our goal is to reimagine-- There we go, sorry. Our goal is to reimagine middle school education by promoting cross-disciplinary learning, innovation, design thinking, and entrepreneurship within an inclusive environment at two of our middle schools by developing our inaugural middle school centers for innovation. The driving why behind the Middle School Centers for Innovation is our commitment to student success. We have tremendous successful programming at all of our middle schools, including access to a robust slate of elective courses and rigorous core programming. Having noted that, understanding the future job market and skills that students need for preparation, we recognize that we have the opportunity to ignite students' passion for learning by providing this new choice in addition to the high-quality options we already offer. We feel that Middle School Centers for Innovation are a critical step for us as a division to provide additional learning experiences for our students that represent the promise we make in our HCPS strategic plan and Henrico learner profile. The Middle School Centers for Innovation are an extension of the HCPS strategic plan. Core to our academic excellence goal is that students have life-ready experiences and a culturally responsive education. The Middle School Centers for Innovation are centered in real-world problem-solving and deeper learning. The centers also support the collaborative partnerships element of our strategic plan by partnering with VCU, which will be discussed later in the presentation, and will organically expose students to diverse career options and authentic learning experiences. We have worked to make sure that all middle schools have a robust HLP-aligned curriculum, resources, pathways, and exploratory electives. We offer options such as an Achievable Dream Certified Academy, Gifted Young Scholars Academy, Henrico Virtual Academy, and Middle Years International Baccalaureate Programs. High schools have specialty centers as well as international baccalaureate programs, advanced career education centers, and advanced college academies. The new Middle School Centers for Innovation will increase middle school voice and choice for students who are interested in these unique learning experiences. The Middle School Centers for Innovation respond to a changing job market. According to the Bureau of Labor and Statistics, from 2021 to 2031, STEM careers will grow at double the rate of non-STEM occupations. The pedagogy and learning pathways of the Middle School Centers for Innovation are designed to prepare students with the mindsets and skills they will need to be successful as entrepreneurs and in STEM occupations. The middle school engagement cliff is characterized by a significant drop in student motivation and enthusiasm for learning that typically occurs in grades six through eighth. Several factors contribute to this decline, including increased academic demands, social emotional changes during adolescence, and the larger and more impersonal environments of middle school. The Middle School Centers for Innovation will serve as a model to address this challenge. Centers will encourage performance-based programs and collaboration with post-secondary providers, utilizing preventative strategies to keep middle school students engaged, those through inclusive school culture, extracurricular activities, and implementing teacher strategies that maintain student interest. Developing these centers will happen through three strategies: partnership in alignment with the VCU DaVinci Center for Innovation, developing instructional pathways that allow students' choice in their learning, and a focus on computational thinking. Our first strategy is to align with the VCU DaVinci Center for Innovation to embed processes and protocols across the curriculum that foster the development of empathy, communication, problem-solving, and design thinking across the curriculum. The partnership will allow for teacher training and curriculum design that will lead us towards outcomes around students demonstrating the competencies and mindsets for entrepreneurship and those defined by the Henrico learner profile. This is a side-by-side visual representation of the mindset of a DaVinci student and the Henrico learner profile, which demonstrates the natural alignment that we believe will bake for a great partnership. The DaVinci Center is a gathering place for imaginative individuals from various backgrounds. The center planning team holds in high regard the design principles of the DaVinci Center, including a student-centered approach, the promotion of cross-disciplinary collaboration, a dedication to fostering entrepreneurship, and the transformation of education. So, how will the DaVinci Center support the Middle School Centers for Innovation? They have committed to empowering our teachers through professional learning opportunities, providing them with valuable micro-credentials, and embedding graduate-designed students directly into the center classrooms. Together, we are co-creating a brighter future for Henrico students. The center planning team has been in direct collaboration with Dr. Garrett Westlake, the Associate Vice Provost of the, excuse me, Associate Vice Provost of Innovation at the DaVinci Center. While Dr. Westlake couldn't be with us today, we are honored to have Manjara, one of his graduate students representing the center, and also Dr. Kim McKnight, the Director of the Center for Teacher Leadership at VCU. As a partner who will be instrumental in expanding opportunities to place teacher residence in the unique program as we do in several other schools currently, thank you for supporting Henrico's first middle school centers for innovation. Our second strategy is to design relevant instructional pathways, micro-credentialing opportunities, and problem sets that give students choices as they acquire durable skills that align with the work and life they see for themselves. As students move through these learning pathways, they will develop both the skills and interests they need to enter and succeed in STEM careers, such as data analyst, content creator, entrepreneur, information security, AI engineer, health services, and so much more. In order to prepare students for future jobs, exposing middle school students to career clusters and workplace skills early in their education offers a range of potential benefits. It enhances career awareness and exploration, introduces students to a variety of career possibilities, and enables students to discover their interests and passions. Our third strategy is to prioritize computational thinking and ensure students are being challenged and supported specifically in math and science. As students prioritize computational thinking, they will be prepared to meet and exceed grade-level standards in math and science. When developing the curriculum, we will rethink the middle school day by combining English and Social Studies instructional blocks and Science and Math instructional blocks into larger chunks of time that will allow for cross-curricular project-based learning and flexible student grouping for small group intervention, acceleration, and the delivery of specially-designed instruction. Additionally, core career and workforce competencies outlined in the DaVinci Center's approach to learning will be reflected in the curriculum as specific course offerings and as embedded approaches to the project-based learning occurring as part of the core content curriculum. Traditional elective courses such as world languages, visual and performing arts will be offered as well. In addition to reimagining the curriculum, we have reimagined learning spaces, which makes learning more dynamic and engaging, motivating students to participate actively in their education. These spaces promote teamwork, communication, and the exchange of ideas among students. It also mimics modern work environments by preparing students for future careers where teamwork and adaptability are key. As we prepare to launch these middle school centers for innovation, we have identified sites, staffing plans, and application processes that will position us for success as we move forward. We have identified two schools with the unique opportunity to design learning spaces where this exemplary programming can be implemented, John Roff Middle School and Queakuson Middle School. Both sites will provide students with direct pathways to ACE and specialty centers for high school students. While all of our focus areas are embedded in our middle school-aligned curriculum and shared with all of our students as a result, our target audience for these centers include middle school students with a passion for learning pathways that emphasize empathy, communication, collaboration, and design thinking. We seek those with a unique desire to explore career opportunities early in their academic journey. Pathways will be formed based on Virginia's career clusters, aligning with our program's offerings in innovation and venture, design, business, and engineering and technology. All Henrico County Middle School students will be eligible to apply for the Centers for Innovation with the first phase for students whose attendance zone is closest to John Roff Middle School, and the second phase for the remaining students whose attendance zone is closest to Queakuson Middle School. Admission to the center will be determined through the use of lottery system based on student interest and successful completion of the previous grade-level requirements. Lottery seats allocated for admission would be determined based on zone middle school size. Any rising sixth through eighth grade student who is zoned for Brooklyn, Elko, Fairfield, Moody, Roff, and Wilder Middle Schools are eligible to apply for the 24-25 school year. In the future, students zoned for Holman, Hungry Creek, Queakuson, Tuckahoe, Pocahontas, and Shore Pump will be eligible to apply for admission at Queakuson Middle School for the 26-27 school year when the new Q opens. Henrico Schools enrollment and residency policies and regulations will apply. For enrollment, the total program size at John Roff Middle School would be approximately 150 students, 50 students per grade level, which may vary and increase as the program evolves. Looking at staffing, we know that a program as innovative as what we're proposing demands forward-thinking and innovative educators. As such, we will both recruit teachers throughout the division, our whole schools, and beyond our division to ensure that we have a staff that can deliver on the promise that we know lies in the curriculum. Also, as stated earlier, there will be opportunities to place teacher residence as well. We will leverage the robust-- I can't talk now. We will leverage the robust micro-credentialing and coursework provided by the DaVinci Center, which will be a new micro-credentialing option in addition to what we have in place with our own HCPS career ladder to target the specific educator skills and attributes that are essential for moving forward. In order to fund the Centers for Innovation, we have funding that can be reallocated to establishing these centers, opportunities for grant funding, and support from business These are exciting changes, and we anticipate that there will be high interest from students and the community. The planning team established a timeline and process for students to apply to the John Roff Middle School Center for Innovation. Various communications will be shared to promote the center on the HCPS website, the binder, social media, and flyers. A bridge builder's virtual information session for families is scheduled for November 15, 2023, and an in-person session will be held in the New Bridge Auditorium on November 29. The application window is November 29 through December 20, 2023. Acceptance letters will be mailed on January 12, and students will have until January 30 to confirm their acceptance. A waiting list will be established, and the students on the list will be contacted if openings become available by February 9, 2024. For staff, an information session will be scheduled in January, and the employment application window will open in January 2024, which aligns with the staff transfer process. As we wrap up our presentation, I want to acknowledge and thank our planning committee comprising of Dr. Grant and myself, Thomas Farrell, Director of High School Education, Matt Baden, Director of Workforce and Career Development, Taylor Snow, Director of Secondary Teaching and Learning, Courtney Bostain, Director of Innovation, William BJ Crowder, Assistant Director of Workforce and Career Development, and John Gregory, Secondary Innovation Specialist.
At this time, Dr. Champ and I are happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Doctors Grant and Dr. Champ. Let's see, Ms. Atkins. I know you're excited.
I am, I'm so sorry. Yeah. So I am going to sound like a TV commercial, because I typed something out, and I simply am going to look at the camera and read it, and then I'll come back with more comments and questions. So here we go. The DaVinci Center for Innovation serves as a catalyst that sparks creativity and interdisciplinary collaboration across a wide range of fields. Joining forces with public schools and the DaVinci Center for Innovation is a visionary step to address the evolving demands of the future. This collaboration is poised to equip our children with the essential tools for excellence, innovation, and leadership, paving the way for progress in our communities and, I believe, across our nation because it's inaugural. So to Dr. Cashwell, leadership teams, all involved, you listened, you learned, and here we are about to be another first. And I'm just going to shout it out, at John Roff Middle School. I am thankful, I am grateful to work with each of you. This amazes me, this is, it just impresses me. And I also, as I know, for me, many know wellness is always at top of mind for me. And to know how much of an investment, not with money, but with time and expertise that we get to this point today, is going to elevate many of our spirits in the community that I serve. And I know all my colleagues care. I know, Mars, I'm feeling your vibe about to pop, because I'm, I'm going to start to stutter, which lets you know, if you hear me misspeak, if you hear me stutter, I'm overwhelmed with joy. So thank you to everyone involved. I know y'all work three times as hard, and many don't get to see it. So let's speak it, because I know how hard you work. And this calls that, this is that. And I get to see a reflection of my-- And I get to see a reflection of my community right now. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins and Ms. Ogburn.
I thought you might skip over me to the person who's going to pop, but anyway, the word innovation just doesn't sum it up enough. I mean, I think that this is something that Dr. Cashwell has created an environment where innovation can occur, and I am just amazed by this. This is something I can't wait to spread because I feel sure it will, as it has through our high schools when it started with just a couple of specialty centers, and now we have all the ones that we do. We talked at our last meeting, we have got to do something to engage our middle school students, and here you are just a few weeks later with the start of this, so I'm completely amazed. But I'm hoping, I'll put a plug in, I'm a big fan of robotics. I'm hoping we'll include some robotics in this. I think that would be great to introduce that for our middle schools to have teams and partner with our high schools. I know we have, some of our high school robotics teams are so good at outreach, and working with our middle schoolers would be a great segue for them. So I'm going to turn it over to, I assume Mrs. Shea is next.
Yes. Mrs. Shea, thank you, Ms. Ogburn.
Goodie, thank you. I am so excited. I see you used Griffin colors for the presentation, got me all excited, but really, when we're looking at Queakuson, new building, new community supports with our full-service community and faces, and now new academic opportunities, like, let's go. This is so exciting. Similar to the Verina District previous to this, there has been no middle school magnet program or specialty center in the Tuckahoe District. And until this year, most of the students in the Tuckahoe District didn't even have access to the IB program at Tuckahoe Middle School. And I've seen in my community, particularly the community that feeds into Queakuson, what a change that's been to be able to have access to the IB program at Tuckahoe instead of driving to Moody, and how many more students were able to apply to participate because of proximity closer to home with transportation. And so I'm just, I'm really excited about the location of this in terms of geographically, but also with the new building coming and all of this new energy and synergy around Queakuson Middle School, I'm just so excited. I think in addition to the location, one thing I'm most excited about this new program is the cross-disciplinary learning. When I was in, just personal story real quick, when I was in college, instead of having English 101 and like History 101, they broke it up, and you had your literature together with history and philosophy, so you had how it all weaved together, and the depth of understanding that came from that was just fantastic. And then they broke the other into composition and public speaking together for a synergy. And it just makes so much sense, right? To take learning out of the silos we've had it in for so long and dovetail things together that create deeper understanding, and then, you know, obviously, I love the math and science connections too. And so I'm really, really excited about this cross-disciplinary learning and to see just what it looks like for our students and how it can change engagement and that sort of thing. And so I'm excited that John Roth gets to go ahead and get it going. Queakuson will come later with the building and the rebuild, and so what's this rolling, Ms. Atkins? I'd love to come over and visit and get even more excited. I agree, robotics would be a great partnership there. There's different tiers of first robotics. There's the one most of our high schools do, which costs a very pretty penny, but there is a tier right under that that a lot of middle schools participate in that is a much more doable four-digit number to get robotics going, and so that could be a really good fit for the middle schools. So, and then the only question, not, you don't have to go into it now, but I would like to see, so we're using a lottery, which I think is great, but I would love to see the requirements, you know, you talked about in order to apply to the lottery, there's some requirements you need to meet, and so I would love, as we kind of get deeper into it, for you to share those requirements with the board so we can kind of understand how that fits in with some of the other middle school offerings.
Absolutely.
That's all. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Reverend Cooper.
Thank you so much. I do share the excitement and enthusiasm of my peers. Can we go to Slide 7, the challenge engagement cliff? This was new to me, not the concept, but the coined term. So I read that some of the things that might help explain why this student engagement cliff happens is because of the overzealous focus on standardized testing and lack of experiential and project-based learning pathways for students and the lack of pathways for students who will not go on to college. So my comment is, so we are challenging the engagement cliff. I'm excited that, once again, HCPS is at the forefront of being responsive to our students' needs by not only aligning with our strategic plan but also being the solution-focused forward thinkers by putting in place programming that will help our students remain engaged to complete high school and also prepare them to be life-ready post-graduates in that path. Now, the question I have, and I don't want to be that person, right, but go to Slide 18 through 20 real quick, I just have a few concerns for your questions. Both of the Centers for Innovation will have seat allocation for students zoned closest to the school, which are all identified on Slide 19. When I look at Slide 18, I can't help but notice that all of the zoned schools, the John Roth Middle School, are currently accredited with conditions except for Elko, which changed this year. Alternatively, all the zoned schools for Queakuson are accredited. Additionally, half the schools for John Roth are opportunity schools. Alternatively, that's not the case with Queakuson Middle Schools. We need, the question I have is, knowing that to be the data, what's going to be the innovative approach that we're going to have with our seat allocation process based on school zones to the closest middle school?
In regards to seat allocation?
Given, talk about the schools that are feeding into those schools, that they are distinctly different in where they stand in regards to accreditation.
So we're looking at the total size and then pretty much divided into parts so that we can have a certain percentage representing each school, so that's kind of equal across the board, so that that's the most equal or equitable way we can do that. And Taylor probably can explain it better than me unless I did okay just now, but total size, looking at the whole, dividing it by the enrollment at each school. So based on the six schools, if you have 5,000 kids, and then you have 1,000 in this school, 700 in this school, and so forth, you divide it by that total number, and that's how we're figuring out the percentage.
And I'm going to build on to what Dr. Champ is saying, and I think what she's done a great job explaining seat assignments and the distribution there, but I think to dig a little more into your question, Reverend Cooper, related to understanding some of the challenges that we know our schools are facing outside of the Center for Innovation, making sure that we're providing those supports to every school who needs it, and making sure that we're differentiating those supports as needed in every school. And so you know from our Opportunity School Initiative or the way we allocate staff, supports, and resources to schools, we're always looking at that in a need-based way. And so I think, you know, in keeping with that, you know, students who continue to attend their zoned school, whether it's accredited, accredited with conditions, or has challenges, are going to continue to receive the support, and should they choose to attend the center, we're wrapping around those supports as well.
No, I think it's important for you to make that distinction because the next statement I was going to make is I know transportation costs might be a factor, but you spoke to how we can assure that when we're discussing the impact of enrollment, staffing, and student experience, that we're making sure that we're being transformative, cutting-edge, as well as supportive. And so that's imperative because we are rolling out a lot. We just talked about doing enrollment, we talked about the criteria that our teachers have to have in order to be able to facilitate that process, and I just want to make sure that staffing allocations, resources available to make sure this is helping, and wraparound services for the feeder pattern. Because when we look at our high schools and talk about middle schools and distill it down to elementary schools, we see the drop-off as far as performance when we get past elementary to Mellon High School. And so this will definitely help us to mitigate that and gives creative and innovative forward-thinking, cutting-edge in both sides of the county, which is equitably, you know, distributed, but we also have to be real about the feeder patterns and the performance of some students and making sure that we have those wraparound services.
And wanting to make sure, you know, all students who have the interest and who have met their prior course requirements in elementary school are ready and prepared to participate in this program. And so I think it's important that, you know, as we're advertising these innovative opportunities for students that all students have the opportunity to see themselves, no matter which middle school they're currently attending, no matter what the accreditation status of that middle school is. And that's the intent here, is to serve all middle schoolers who may have an interest and propel them. You know, there'll be some lessons learned, I think, that are applicable to all of our middle school classrooms. If you think about sort of a center or a hub for innovation, we talked about that engagement cliff, and Dr. Champ at the beginning of the presentation really talked about the work that's been done across all middle schools with programming so that every student, no matter where they're attending middle school in one of our other programs or their home-zoned middle school, that they have a rigorous, broad opportunities for exploratory electives, all of those things there in their school. But we know there are some challenges at that point in the school career, the engagement cliff being one of them. And so as we sort of rethink classroom settings, performance-based learning, all of those things, interdisciplinary, there will be some things that we can transfer to every middle school classroom as far as best practice, and I think that's the nice thing about having a lab of innovation. It not only impacts the students in the program, it helps us learn and grow pedagogy across our middle schools, and that's one of the things we're really excited about, too.
Well, you know, I know my time is winding down on this school board, but I just hope that the new board that's seated will continue with those who are coming back to ensure that you have the flexibility, that you have the resources to continue to be innovative, to be industry-leading, and that we never want to settle for great, we want to be greater. And so I'm proud of our processes and the full support of this board, to you and the staff to continue to down that track. So thank you both.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. So any student can apply? I mean, given their zoned feeder schools, right, to first John Roth and then Queakuson, any student? Any student, right, that's eligible? And the criteria are what?
It really is student interest. Are they interested?
It is student interest.
Yes, and meeting their academic requirements.
I would compare this to the Code RVA program that you might be familiar with at the secondary level, where of course you have to have met certain prerequisite requirements from the grade level prior. For example, if you're a sixth grader but you've met the, you've completed your fifth grade course requirement, seventh grade, so on. So that, you know, is a basic requirement, but it's really having the interest, the passion, and the desire. Students who do well learning in things that, in a non-traditional classroom setting, that might be more hands-on and exploratory where there is interdisciplinary connection.
So it's just interesting to me, I'm very excited about it because it seems to be one of the first specialty things that we've done that a normal student, non-honors, non-IB, non-gifted. Right, it's for everyone, it's, you can be you, and this could be for you. So I'm extremely excited to see this opportunity presented to us. So for parents, after they complete this middle school opportunity, high schools, any opportunity is open to them, right, after completion of this program.
Yeah, and we're hoping, yes, and Dr. Champ mentioned in the presentation that, you know, there's some direct alignment in the courses, the courses students will have access to as part of this program that really are a nice fit as sort of a catalyst for interest to some of our specialty centers and ACE programs. And so there'll be opportunities for students who may not have thought about a particular specialty center or offering at high school, this may spark some interest in that. It's a nice pathway to get kids excited about those options.
I appreciate that, and I know it's going to be in the communication plan because I think that's critical, right? Not only who is this program for, but what will be your options after completing this program, right? That they're really unlimited, but here are some really special ones, right? Thank you so much, Doctors Grant and Champ.
Thank Dr. Cashwell.
I'm sorry, Ms. Atkins had one more question.
Oh, I did, I did. I was feeling all the vibes, so I kind of turned it over down there, but I did have, I did have a question. I would love to learn a little bit more about the advertising or marketing, the look, the feel, the words that we're going to use for this center.
So we're going to, Eileen has already started, oh, you want to?
I was just going to say, Eileen was starting to stand up as you were uttering her name, not knowing that she was doing that behind you.
Good afternoon. So we've already started working on a new logo that builds off of our Henrico learner profile that you'll recall, is the circular where students are at the center, and we're using that sort of as our base and building off to reflect innovation, design thinking, but still that colorful burst and calling this a Center for Innovation at each of the schools. So instead of trying to make it, you know, have a, to compete as part with the school identity, it's actually that school within a school, so it's all together, where our purpose is to reinforce that this is not something separate, this is something that builds upon the excellence that's already in our schools. So trying to merge that identity with Roth, with the Q, and then also having those personal touches of the parent engagement sessions for information, having some information that can go directly to our students and to our families through Parent Square to explain to them a little bit more fully about the centers. And then, of course, we'll have our general communication that will go out through the binder, through the clipboard. It already, we have a webpage that we're hoping to launch first thing tomorrow. Just wanted to make sure that we were on track with the discussion here and then putting that out through social media, through the middle schools, and providing some resources for those principals. But again, part of that is that personal touch through our school counselors, identifying students who might be good candidates. So it's both word of mouth and then general marketing publication.
So with some of the marketing and the website, did we reach out to middle school students to provide their input in what their thoughts were with look and feel? Because middle school is a different character.
Yeah.
And so I'm hopeful that we did loop in some middle school students and say, what do you think about this? And what do you think about the words we're using in our marketing materials?
So this is a very new, we're at the very first phase of this. I think that as we continue to move forward, we do have that opportunity. As you know, we've discussed having some student focus groups on communications in general, and we're kicking that off with our students at the Verina Communication Center at the high school level. And so this provides us an opportunity to also engage some middle school students in that same type process.
Wonderful. I would like, before it's launched, and I don't know if any of my colleagues are interested, I would actually like to see the website before it's launched. And not to hold it up, not to stop it, but I do think that if we're aware of what it looks like, what it's shared with constituents, it would give us a better way to perhaps answer questions or anything like that if we get to see it prior to it being distributed.
Absolutely, and I do think that we took great care in not using words like interdisciplinary when you're talking about middle school, you're talking about combining classes, you're talking about school day schedules that are special but not longer. So we did try to use language that would be appropriate for middle school students as they look at it as well.
And I'm hopeful that we did use some emotional words to, it's such a time, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, that we really paid attention to the emotional piece of language that we put in there, especially with innovation and how we can tie into that. So I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing, you know, whatever materials you have available before it's launched.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Dr. Cashwell.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say one thing.
You did have one more, sorry.
I just want, everyone that participated in this project, they have put in a lot of hours, and they're here, and I would just like them to stand up so that we can recognize everyone that has participated in this project.
As well as our partners from VCU.
Appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you again to our partners from VCU for being here for this presentation and for your continued partnership and collaboration on this and so much more. All right, our Our next presentation is our annual student membership report. As you know, each year, we report our membership to the Virginia Department of Education as part of an annual requirement, and we also provide an update for the board and are ready to do that now.
Okay, this is my final presentation for today. Today, Dr. Hinton, Director of Assessment, Research, and Evaluation, and I will provide you with an annual update on September 30th, student membership. This data is reflective of the membership data that each school division is required to report to the Virginia Department of Education and reflects students in kindergarten through 12th grade. There are also multiple attachments and board docs with additional data for you to review. Now, we'll turn the presentation over to Dr. Hinton.
Thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. To advance our division's strategic objective of achieving inclusive and safe physical learning spaces that foster a sense of community pride, one of the key initiatives outlined in our strategic plan is the annual monitoring of membership growth. This ongoing assessment helps us identify both immediate and future needs, which in turn inform our decision-making regarding capital improvement planning. On September 30th, 48,949 students were in membership, which is consistent with the prior year. This trend is not surprising when you examine recent birth rate impacts on school enrollment across Virginia. In January of 2022, the demographic research group within the UVA Weldon Cooper Center for Public Service released a report revealing that even before the onset of the pandemic, Virginia was already poised to experience a decrease in public school enrollment, primarily due to a decrease in birth rates. Here in Henrico, we have observed a comparable decline, particularly affecting kindergarten enrollment in the foreseeable future. When analyzing the enrollment data across all grade levels, at the elementary level, we've witnessed growth in grades two, four, and five compared to the previous year, with minor declines in the other grade levels. Collectively, we observed a net increase of 70 students at the elementary level. Conversely, at the middle school level, there was an annual reduction of 56 students. It's noteworthy that in 2019 and in 2020, we experienced larger cohorts progressing through middle school, particularly with eighth-grade cohorts exceeding 3,900 students. However, the current middle school cohorts are smaller, hovering around 3,600 students. Moving on to the high school level, this year's ninth-grade cohort is smaller compared to recent years. Overall, high school enrollment has decreased by 150 students, although 10th and 12th grades have seen slight increases. This chart provides a side-by-side comparison of actual membership figures and the projected membership data dating back to 2014. What's evident is that, on the whole, our projections have exhibited a high degree of accuracy, with an average variance of less than 1%. It's important to note that our projection process is a comprehensive one, incorporating historical retention patterns, birth rates, and other relevant contextual factors to forecast annual student enrollment. In addition to monitoring student enrollment numbers, we conduct an annual review to track the evolving demographics of our student body over time. Analyzing data on ethnicity and race spanning the last decade, we observe that a larger proportion of our students fall within the Asian, Hispanic, and multiracial categories. White and Black students together constitute approximately 2/3 of our student population. However, we are witnessing a decline in enrollment among both of these racial groups. In looking at the change in the percentage of our economically disadvantaged students, we have increased from 40% in 2014 to 42% in 2023. This represents a 3% change in the actual number of students. Students are identified as economically disadvantaged if the student is eligible for free or reduced lunch meals, receives temporary assistance for needy families, or is eligible for Medicaid. When we look at the change in our English learners, we've seen a 5 percentage point increase in the percentage of students in our membership identified. However, the numbers below the chart show that the actual number of students has increased 84%. Lastly, students with disabilities comprises 13% of our student population, which is a change of 19% from 2014. The pupil-to-teacher ratio for elementary, middle, and high schools are shown above. Since 2014, we've seen a reduction in PTR at all levels. This is a reduction, sorry, this is a result of fluctuations in membership, as well as the hiring of over 250 additional teachers since 2014.
This concludes our presentation. We're happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you so much. Mrs. Shea.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Couple of observations and then a couple of concerns. First of all, love to see the PTR number go down. I know it takes a lot to move that number, even just a little bit. And so those are significant decreases. You know, I think one thing is looking at, so that's the average of each school, average across the county. And so making sure not only that we're hitting the mark with that average, but also when we look at individual schools and we look at individual classes, that we're also not kind of busting at the seams somewhere, some places in smaller in the others. Also noticed, our English language population has almost doubled in 10 years. That's significant. And so I know Dr. Cashwell and I have had conversations, as well as other board members, about really looking at how we provide those services, what the services are providing as numbers continue to increase in Henrico. And then to get school-specific for a moment, when I looked at the membership data paired with capacity for the county, there are three elementary schools over 100%, and two of them are in my district. And so we need to get creative with some solutions. So just to speak specifically about my district, that's Pemberton and Three Chopped. Three Chopped hosts quite a few programs. The major, I don't know if, it's the majority, Mickey, but it's close to maybe 50% of the school's programs, would you say? And so, but also Pemberton is particularly concerning when I look at it, because when we were looking at boundary adjustments four years ago, Pemberton was so far under, they were in the 80s, that we were actively looking at who else we could add to Pemberton. Obviously, redistricting got paused, those boundaries did not change. It has, so on its own, it has swung from in the 80s to over 100%, and that trend is not slowing down anytime soon, because the neighborhoods around Pemberton, because of when they were built, they're seeing a lot of turnover, where older, original owners now have families moving in with children. That school particularly, every single space is a learning space right now. They have turned workrooms into offices so that offices can be classroom. There's nowhere else to put students. The music is in the auditorium to free up classrooms. And so as we look at these membership numbers, I think we need to have some creative conversations on how we make more space or make space where it's needed, might be the better place to put it. Because I think overall, especially with the new expanded capacity coming online at Jackson Davis and Longan, et cetera, I think we're going to have enough capacity, but it's getting the people where the capacity is. And so as a board, as a division with Dr. Cashwell and her team, really kind of digging into what are our solutions there, I think we have some creative ones with programming. I know it doesn't just pertain to my district, but when I was looking at that list to see three schools in red and two of them in my district, where frankly, there is not a lot of development being built, like the Tuckahoe does not have, in both of those school zones, there haven't been developments built. And so it's, you know, it's that turnover. It was just very surprising, and so it's got my mind turning on how we come up with solutions for these schools that aren't just rolling in learning cottages. So thinking outside the box. I know that'll be an ongoing conversation, but I thought it pertained to our membership here. And that's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. Ms. Ogburn.
Sure. Like you said, the capacity, I mean, that's why we love getting these numbers this time of year, so that as we look at the CIP, we can look at the numbers. The two are really interconnected. And so it's very timely that on the same day we're talking about the CIP, we're also talking about the numbers. I'm sorry, Mr. Richard, but yes, that's the, but I did the same thing that Mrs. Shea did, and I'm looking at the capacity. And the problem is, is that, yes, if you look at the capacity across the whole district, there are, there's room for all of our students, but it's not in the right place. And so, and as you have schools over, I have schools over capacity or right at the brink. And so looking at the numbers, Colonial Trail capacity is 690, actual is 691. So yes, they are using every available space. Rivers Edge, they are using every available space. And so, but most worrisome right now is Deep Run. And back to when Mr. Richard was at Deep Run, Deep Run was crowded. And so now, Deep Run, capacity of 1,850 is at 1,889. And then we have Tucker, who was historically way under capacity. Now, everybody wants to go to Tucker, and capacity is 1,990 and actual is 1,979. So we've got four schools that are right at the brink. And then, but Rivers Edge has trailers, Ridge has trailers. We have schools in the district that have trailers, multiple of them, and they are having, they're bursting at the seams, they're having to go outside. So that leads me to ask, for example, at Jackson Davis, now, obviously, we're going to rebuild Jackson Davis, it's going to grow. Hopefully, the plan will be that some of that overcrowding at Jackson Davis will be allevied by the new, larger building, and some of the other schools will be allevied. But Jackson Davis, I'm just curious, and I don't know if you know Dr. Hinton, Jackson Davis, the capacity is 570. But does that include the kids who are in the trailers? Do you know? I'm just curious. If a capacity number.
The membership number.
It's the membership of all students who are there.
Right. But when we look at building capacity, if a building has trailers on site.
Right. The trailers are not included in the capacity.
They're not included in the functional capacity calculation.
Right. But don't we usually, and I'm glad you brought up functional capacity, Dr. Cashwell, because we usually have a target of functional capacity. We try not to go over 90%, correct?
Well, I mean, we, schools are built to hold the total number they're built to hold, so that would be 100%. So technically, if a school's at 100% capacity, they're functioning as they were built to function. But certainly, when you're looking at enrollment trend data and patterns and sort of, you know, looking at where we have schools that are reaching capacity or slightly going over capacity, yeah, you would want to start looking at schools in the 90s and examining membership trends and those sorts of things. But at 90%, it wouldn't indicate that there's an issue with crowding in the building.
Right. Well, and that's what I figured. But I mean, I'm looking at five schools in the Three Chop district who are right at the brink of being over. And Rivers Edge, obviously, they've added another trailer. Rivers Edge help is coming, but it's in the form of a school that is down the road. And we're going to talk more about Rivers Edge when Mr. Richard is up here. But I just, I'm hoping that we will be, I'm sorry, he's shaking his head again. I'm just hoping that we're really watching these schools closely so that they get the help that they need to be able to function. Our class sizes don't eke up to the point where the teachers are stressed to the max and that, you know, they're having to do what Mrs. Shea is saying, using all available space. And I know Colonial Trail has been in this situation for years of being crowded. So years ago, when we redistricted, and four years ago, the result was is we put more, we moved students to Cackley. Well, now, Cackley is still, I mean, it's grown, and that's great, but we still have Colonial Trail at capacity. So I'm just hoping we're carefully watching.
Absolutely.
And given the supports, the supports these schools need.
And I think, you know, interesting to student membership, you can look at state, you can look at national trends in enrollment and public education, you can look at state trends, then, of course, our local trends, and then down to the school level. And so overall, what we know across the state is membership in public schools is declining, the birth rate is declining. The data and projections, forecasts have held up, and that's a steady downhill. So I expect that we're going to continue to see that trend in Henrico, as we will across the state. But then, you have to look at every school community and the unique situations, the housing market, how those different things affect every individual school community. So I think, you know, when, and I know this board does an exceptional job of balancing all those factors and the long-range planning. So you're looking at shrinking enrollment as a locality, probably over the next five to 10 years, and we can see that projected out in the numbers. And they've been accurate with birth rates, so on. But we've got pressure points now we have to solve. We want to be responsible with making sure that as we're planning new buildings and, you know, renovations, that we're responsive to growth and development in our county and where it's happening, but that we're also not going too far, too fast, being very cognizant of this enrollment decline. We've seen both at the national and state level. And we're mirroring that locally.
Honestly, what concerns me is the growth and the development of what is to come, because there are certain areas of the county where there's more growth, there's more houses being built. And so you have to look at what's already overcrowded and nearby are new housing developments. So I just, I think it's all connected, and that's why we look at these numbers at the same time as we look at the CIP, because they're so connected.
Yeah. And, you know, and every school size is different. So, for example, Pemberton can fluctuate in the 90 to over 100% by five, four or five kids. I mean, you can look at plus or minus. So sometimes, when you see a school go from 90 to 100%, you might think, oh, my goodness, but you could be looking at, I don't remember the exact numbers, it's 10 students. You know, that will make that difference in our smaller elementary schools. And certainly, it matters when you're watching that. But I think it's also the scale and the scope varies. I do think the work this board's doing to really drill down to each school in your community and understand the impact, the need, for example, our high schools, you know, you mentioned Tucker and Deep Run, because of our A-center programming, so while we count all the students in our total membership for capacity, when you actually subtract out A-day and B-day students, they actually drop below that 100%. So they're actually not sitting over capacity every day. But is capacity high? Is there demand on that school? And how do we watch that and balance it?
That's all for me. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Ms. Ogburn. Ms. Atkins.
Thank you for the presentation. I wonder, with the data that we have, which is great to have, is it possible to also receive information on how we balance the transition? You can have, and you described it very well, as we have this wonderful platform where our students can intermingle in different communities and different districts and be exposed to opportunities in different buildings. It would be nice to have data to see the shift in that transition. So I'll use our new center for an example, and that might be a good starting point if we don't have this. But I think it would be wise to better understand how we're shifting and how we're bringing in new innovative things and how our students gravitate towards that, because that also impacts capacity. So traditional is what we have. But as we're forward-thinking, I'll use HBA. I'm wondering if we have a target for that, even though it's not a physical location, what's the target for that and how that shifts? So as we introduce more programming, American Sign... So as we introduce more programming, American Sign Language, for example, HVA, can we get data on what the shifts? Because what is significant is how we're viewing our specialty centers into enrollment, how we're viewing our ACE programs into enrollment. And if we had a better understanding of what those shifts look like as we introduce new programming, I think it'll be, I would at least have better discernment over what the projection look like years out. We know enrollment may decline based off of birth rate, but enrollment may decline as we continue to bring in new things. Is that data exist or is that something that we could potentially receive in the future?
So I definitely think we could look at, you know, which students are attending programs who live in the zones versus who live outside of those zones to see how, how the programming is drawing students into particular schools.
So I'll give you my perspective. I've been thinking about this for a while. We certainly need to address the needs that I'm hearing over in Three Chop and Tuckahoe. Hands down, that's today. But the future, as we understand what our students' desires are, specifically looking at the slide that show the decline in middle schools, and we're addressing that? I wonder if for me, I have a large chunk that are interested in, let's say, the medical field, and they're shifting, but they live here. They live in the Verona District. They shift there. And so as we continue, and I won't beat a dead horse here, but I think we may be on to something if we can get that data for better discernment, better decision-making. Also, we spend a ton of money on buildings. I actually think building structures will look completely different years from now. And we can be ahead of that curve in how we design them, how we invest in them financially, how we invest in them with our time in looking at data like this. I actually think, I'm very appreciative, I'll start with that. But I'm wondering if we could be a little bit more innovative in how we look at our numbers. Because depending on your lens will be your discernment and your decision. So if there's a more collective way to look at it, and, and an example is what I just shared, looking at how we infiltrate, how we push our programming numbers into holistic numbers, we may be on to something that gives us a better way to assess what the future looks like and how we spend our money. So just a thought. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. Reverend Cooper?
Um, Dr. Hinton, um, Dr. Grant, thank you for my eight years on here providing this state-required membership data that we have. And really, the, the data, it speaks for itself as far as what our trends are in regards to our enrollment. So I appreciate, Dr. Cashwell, you speaking to the fact that we are going to look at how we allocate resources toward space allocation. And we're going to always know that it ebbs and flows and five may make it over 110. So I have no questions. Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. So I was wondering, I mean, Mrs. Shea did mention PTR and trends, but here's the thing, it's an average. So I'm really interested in class size. And I would very much like for the board to receive another report, we used to receive it, about class sizes across the county and trends. Because that's also part of this conversation that we don't normally get with this data, but I'd like to change that because it, it does impact. You know, for example, all five of us supported smaller class sizes moving toward that, I believe, the end of January 2020, right before the pandemic. So then the world changed. And I would like to see us move back to that discussion. So I'd very much like that data, Dr. Cashwell.
We'd be happy to provide class size updates and reports. And yeah, I mean, I think as the PTR shows, you know, we're losing students. We are holding on to the same number, if not adding teacher allocation. So what we are seeing is that PTR average change. But to your point, when you drill down to the classroom, depending on the type of course, course requirements, all of those things, you know, certainly, class size is something we need to look at too and be happy to provide that.
I'd definitely like for us to, to do better in Henrico despite, I mean, not just budget to the maximum class size possible. I would really like for us to do better than that. And then nextly, and this may, Dr. Grant, this may actually be you, or it may be Mr. Bayton, who I see sitting back there. Can somebody speak to me about day one, day two? When I was looking at enrollments, which the board was provided for our CTE, we expect for those numbers to increase, right, as our expansion?
I can speak to that. I was just going to save you a trip. Thank you. If I get it wrong, please come. No.
Because there are numbers that folks have referenced at this high school level that are.
That's right. So current, the students who are currently leaving and attending the ACE program, we factored in. But obviously, with 900 more seats coming on board, more students having access to those programs, again, that's been, and I think, you know, Mrs. Goncell, if I recall comments from a year or maybe two CIP cycles ago, this, this is something you've really pushed us on, is understanding the impact of, and I think Mrs. Atkins was just speaking to this, programming, more options means students are choosing to attend secondary programs that are not in their zoned home school. And that does help us balance capacity. And we've seen that it's helped us balance a bit because there are some demanding, you know, high-demand opportunities that take kids away from their zoned school where there's capacity to receive them.
Specifically, having looked at the numbers, I would just like to encourage during this enrollment time, and we're looking at our course guide today, everything is just connected in some kind of way, that all of our students across all of our schools realize the opportunities that are available to them. Because some schools are, some students, I don't know if they're not aware of the opportunities that are available to them across our schools, especially in CTE. I mean, I've looked at the graduation rates and post-secondary, and some of the numbers really don't align there with some of the enrollment that I'm seeing in some of our CTE programs across our high schools. So I'd like for us to be aware of that or for sharing information with families because that too will not only, and it's more about helping the students, but that data only came to me because I was looking at capacity, right? Like what is the enrollment?
Secondary benefit when it's helping us shift our student body. But absolutely, we want to make sure we're starting our messaging to families early and often. As we saw through Major Clarity, the course guide, all the things about the many opportunities available, particularly in our ACE programming, what we currently have, not to mention what's coming with the expansion. And hopefully, the, one of the new centers for innovation will also be a catalyst to get kids thinking about opportunities they may never have known about when it comes to A-Center programming and other specialty centers at the high school.
And then do we start watch, we used to, I want to say, I followed schools for a while. So we used to start watching a school at what, 95%?
Yeah. I mean, I think it's fair to say we're watching schools in the 90s, right? And, and looking at particularly if there's planned development in the area and monitoring. We monitor that for every school, but you know, we would certainly make it clear if schools were already in that 90 threshold that there may be some concerns.
You, you mentioned a really good word just, just now. You mentioned development. I think Ms. Ogbonn referenced development as well. And throughout the year, we often receive planning, planning reports, right, on the status of perhaps zonings or rezonings. Could the board perhaps get an update prior to this annually that just kind of reminds us of maybe where developments are, right? Like this property is supposed to be developed, but the developer is going to sit on it due to market, you know, market conditions or for whatever the reason. Or phase one has, is in progress. So expect the impact because.
Often, you're getting them as they're being planned or approved, but then you don't necessarily have an update that a shovel hasn't hit the ground. You've known about it when it was approved and we've shared it. So yes, we can give some sort of status updates on any approved development, where it is at that moment in time. Because, or even development that in, in, you know, is newer, but may not be yielding students as it might have been expected to. We are seeing a lot of new development is not yielding the student growth.
And we know families, families have moved around as well. But I mean, I know that's been a component in just watching some of the developments, listening to my colleagues and other conversations, reading, reading the paper and announcements and so forth. That has been, this group has worked so hard to proactively plan and budget and look at cap, all the things together, right? Capacity, programming. So I think that, that's a missing component for us that I'd like to ask for it to be included from now on, at least as an update for the board members.
We can include one that will reflect the best of our knowledge on planning and developing. I mean, I think, as a status update.
Yes, Ms. Ogbonn. I'm going to chime in with what you're saying. Because we do get a planning commission report and, and all of that. And, and I would concur with you completely. We get those of approved projects and what's coming. But there are oftentimes projects in the pipeline. There are projects that are proposed. And it does help, I think, our staff and us look at the CIP and look at our capacity numbers. Because I mean, you, I, I've said this to you before. You drive by those blue signs that say, we're rezoning and there's another development going in. And my first response is, where are those kids going to school? And I know it's a concern for all of us. And, but obviously, for planning purposes, we need, that information really helps. So I'm, I'm glad you brought that up.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogbonn. Thank you so much, Doctors Grant and Hinton. Dr. Cashwell?
All right. Our next item, very much related to the last, these seem to be flowing well, is a review, another, a second opportunity to review and discuss. Previously, we shared with you a full presentation related to our request for funding for a capital improvement plan for fiscal year 2425. We also shared long-range plans. And Mr. Pritchard is here to provide another brief update and opportunity to answer questions. We provided the board some documents prior, or following, rather, our last presentation to continue the discussion. I'd also like to note that Mr. Brandon Hinton, Deputy County Manager, is here as well. We appreciate your being here for this discussion. Mr. Pritchard?
Well, first of all, I'd like to wonder if Dr. Grant would like to come up and stay with me on this presentation. I mean, just making it clear, five for five. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board and Dr. Cashwell. Today, I will share our proposed capital improvement plan for the fiscal year 2425 funding request and share our tentative long-range capital plans through 3334. Each year, the board is asked to consider and approve a capital improvement plan, which includes projected funding amounts needed to maintain, for maintaining and growing our facilities, as well as funding for transportation and technology infrastructure for the next fiscal year. The CIP is only funded one year at a time, and we are asking for this board's approval in December for mechanical roofing, playgrounds, vehicle replacement and technology projects. If approved, the CIP request will be reviewed by the Board of Supervisors during their budget considerations. As you'll recall from the last presentation, this funding request seeks increasing, increases from prior-year funding in the areas of mechanical and roofing. These amounts have not been adjusted since 2000. And based on industry averages for repairs and replacements, the current amount is not sufficient to keep pace with the projects, the project needs. You'll recall, we've leveraged one-time funds from ESER state grants and one-time appropriations from our board supervisors to meeting roofing and mechanical needs outside of the CIP funding. We do want to thank the Board of Supervisors for recent increases in the past few years in our CIP funding for technology, vehicle replacement and playground equipment. These funds have been instrumental in meeting school needs for instruction and transportation. In addition to the annual CIP funds, we continue to leverage meal tax funding for deferred maintenance projects at our schools. We remain, remain grateful to both the school board and board of supervisors for this funding to help maintain our 73 facilities. The funding has been utilized for security, for security projects, replacement of gym floors, bathroom upgrades, lighting upgrades and parking lot improvements and much more. Annually, meal tax funds are used for projects across all school levels in all five magisterial districts. You'll recall the meal tax funds were deferred for two years to offset construction costs for our two newest high schools. Thus, we are still working through planned meal tax projects previously identified. And we have also leveraged this funding source to meet the needs of three middle schools by adding auditorium projects over the next three years. While I am currently seeking the board's approval for the FY 2425 CIP funding cycle, it is important to look beyond the next year and share our work on the division's long-range capital plans. There is no funding source currently identified for, for these projects. But looking ahead allows us to schedule them as funding is available, as well as to consider how bonds may be leveraged to fund such needs. A recent example is the 2022 bond that was passed last year allowing the division to take care of the projects identified as needs in prior years. These projects are not part of our FY 2425 CIP, and thus, we are sharing for the board's context as we consider how we will fund FY 24 needs. Thank you to the school board and for your stewardship and guidance as we take a proactive, long-range approach to ensure we are focused and on track with keeping our buildings in good condition for learning and teaching. And this does conclude my review. You'll also note on board docs, I've included capacity reports for the board's consideration. These, the full presentation from our last meeting is also included for your reference in board docs. And we'll be seeking the board's approval of our FY 2425 CIP funding request in the December monthly meeting. And again, I would like to thank Brandon Hinton for being here as a, as a partner with us during the CIP process. And if I also could, because we haven't had an opportunity to do so yet, and at least introduce somebody new to our staff. She came aboard with us in April as Justin Briggs left. Our, one of our, at least our new school planning specialist, Rachel Thayer, would she stand up and be recognized? And she's been a part of this, like I said, since April. And, you know, she's been an instrumental part of starting to pull some of these numbers together and start looking at capacity as we do and review it annually. So thank you both. And that's it for me. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard, and welcome, Rachel. This, this group is appreciative of you joining Henrico schools and look forward to the work that we've just requested. We look forward to seeing it. And Mr. Hinton, thank you again for being a partner with us and for being here today in case you need to answer any questions. Let me see, let me start with Reverend Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Pritchard? She almost started with Ms. Ogbonn, but she's going to save probably the best for later. No, I'm good because I don't, I don't have a question.
Heard a heavy sigh. That's all I'm listening to.
I know. I don't, I don't have a question, but more of a point of feedback. Slide three, go to it real quick if you don't mind. Slide three is a very powerful and strong communication piece to our community. It shows that 425 meal tax projects totaling that investment of $87,673,770 has benefited all of our schools. It would be beneficial to have this on our website somewhere. I'll lean with the break on Dr. Cashwell, the projects for the general public to see. And as a foodie with Miss Shea also encourages us to continue eating and dining in Henrico County because we are know, we know we're investing in our schools. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. And one of the benefits of eating out in Henrico County is that everyone who comes to Henrico County also our schools benefit from, right? So thank you for highlighting that. Ms. Atkins?
So we know that capacity and enrollment are important in making decisions around the CIP. Building age and structure and maintenance is as well. So given this inaugural center coming to John Roth, I know I previously asked about exploration for John Roth Middle School. What is possible there? Because we certainly, we're excited about a new center. But certainly, in order to help attract, we're going to need something in this building. And so I don't know if you're prepared to share with me what results you have based off of my previous request on what we can do for John Roth, knowing the direction we're going in and putting a brand-new center into an existing building without any level of something. I'm just hopeful that you're going to be able to share with me what's possible. And Dr. Cashwell and I had a conversation, and so I am opening the floor for her to share more.
Happy to. And would say that, you know, one of the things we know about innovative programming is it can happen anywhere and any place, outside, inside. But certainly, to your point, learning environment matters. And so. And so while we're not envisioning construction projects at Rolfe, what we are envisioning is some changes in the way furniture, or furniture is, furniture layouts, rather, flexible furniture is what I was aiming to say, the addition of flexible furniture. The whole school is actually up for a repaint as part of our meals tax list. So they have had previously a number of projects as part of the meals tax list and otherwise, but really can expect to see for the whole school, as well as particularly for the Centers for Innovation, some classroom settings and setups that are a little different than the traditional, you know, much like when, I'll use for an example, the Environmental Studies Center we opened at Verina High School. So we advertised the center, the programming, the courses, recruited students. And in the meantime, we're working with community partners, business partners, higher ed partners, leveraging grants, doing unique things to get new equipment that pertain, you know, particularly to environmental studies. Similarly, we'd be doing the same and are currently doing the same, I should say, as the program gets off the ground to make sure that whether it's equipment, materials, supplies, lighting, furniture, fixtures, all of those things receive a refresh and an update so that it's really conducive to the kind of learning environment that we're expecting with the Innovation Center.
So I am very appreciative and I'm interested, as we continue to move forward, to learn more. This is just a plea. When we're thinking about in the conversation we just had, understanding and being forward-thinking, we know that students and families will shift as interests change and increase. Areas that have programming that's conducive, that looks like the place they want to be in, will gravitate there. And you're going to have an increase in those specific schools. To set up a school for success with a new center, it is very important to invest the appropriate amount of funds that, from our board of supervisors, to make that particular program an innovation center. Period. So to take an existing traditional structure, to make it innovative, to attract students and families that want to feel like they're an innovation center, it's going to take investment. We do not have more than four windows, I believe, at this middle school. So I'm appreciative of Dr. Cashwell and trying to do the best we can with the money that we have, and we're going to make it as awesome as we can. But let's be very clear, indeed, if we're going to have an innovation center, it cannot sit in a traditional setting, which is what we have. That is just the truth. And I'm just going to pause. What I'm equally excited about is Queakuson, getting a brand-new building with a brand-new center. So when we're thinking about and being forward-thinking, as a family member, where would I want to gravitate towards for an innovation center? A brand-new building with innovation built for it or the current building? And so I say that to be honest. I'm also saying that to be vulnerable because what I believe what we're going to do with this inaugural, inaugural center at Queakuson is going to be fantastic, but it needs to be equally fantastic at John Rolfe Middle School. And I believe we can do that because I think every school board member here wants to find a way that we look at equity with its true definition. So my plea is to please position all of our schools in a way with a center. And the environmental center is perfect. It's placed there because of the location. That's the truth. The land, the sky, and the water. And it's going to be successful because we were thoughtful behind the location and what it can offer to the programming. If we're going to be true to that, we should do the same for John Rolfe Middle School for innovation and not try to make Wi-Fi out of dial-up. We need to make Wi-Fi, period, for innovation. So I'm going to land the plane there because I can speak on and on and on, and I will in the future. I'm going to prepare you for that. But I feel very strongly around how wonderful this center is going to be, and we need to make sure that the location works for it. So thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Ms. Sackens. Ms. Ogden.
Absolutely. I hear what you're saying. I really, really do. And so I wanted to ask Mr. Pritchard, in that rain, if you could go, I think it's the slide before or after this, I don't remember, it's after, I guess. In 2031, Rolfe is, there's a little asterisk beside it, and that means a capital.
Yes, they have to go through the study.
Pre-planning study. So that study has not been done on those three schools as of yet, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. So that facility pre-planning study is what we have done to prioritize.
Yes.
The buildings that have come before.
Yes.
Right? And so if nothing else, that's going to be done, and I hear you, 2031. That's, but the problem that we have is that we have already got a bond referendum that's been approved by the voters with a list of projects on it. We face this same, just a little historical perspective here because having sat through two bond referendums, I will tell you that the first round in 2016, we went through the list, and there were ones that got left off. There were schools that had to wait. Jackson Davis had to wait and is now, you know, here we are in 2023, talking about a school that we talked about in 2016. And sometimes when we have a finite amount of funds for a bond referendum, we have to stay true to that bond referendum. Now, obviously, there were changes made in that bond referendum, but that allowed for the rebuild of Tucker and the rebuild of Highland Springs, which were initially planned for. But I think what we're constrained by, as far as Rolfe goes right now, is the funding for a middle school to the price of what a middle school costs. I don't think the, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong.
No, you're correct. What I think is to really get, which was the initial request, to do exploration about what can be done. Not a rebuild, not a brand-new, but please invest funding to make this feel like an innovation center. So Dr. Cashwell spoke to it softly, whether it's furniture, painting, that's a start. It cannot be all for an innovation center. Let's be very serious. Let's be very real. It's a wonderful start because we're going to figure out how to do it with what we have. This is going to take more investment. I'm looking at you, Mr. Hinton, and I'm so sorry, but I'm glad you're here. This is going to take a little bit more, not, not a Queakuson.
Right.
That's going to be phenomenal, and I'm excited for that because we're going to learn together. We're going to learn, you're going to have that, but we'll be able to learn off of that by the time this comes, but the Innovation Center cannot wait.
Right.
So what are the things and the additional monies, and that's the research I asked for? What, what are, what's necessary from an additional funding perspective to get this innovative, this building innovative? It's not a rebuild. It's not a brand-new.
I understand.
That's what I'm asking for.
Well, and that's why I asked, since you brought up Rolfe.
Well, yeah, so I just wanted to note a couple of things to respond, and I want you to know you're heard. And so in addition to the lower-hanging fruit, I will say that I've mentioned that is not the end of our thoughts related to what's possible at this space. I also think it's important with any program, especially an inaugural one, that the students and staff who will be a part of this first group have voice in determining what spaces should look like, feel like, what's needed indoors, what's needed outdoors, and that will help us conceptualize, I think, stronger plans on what is possible. You know, certainly, we want it to be a world-class program, and we want the teaching and learning environments to match. And so, you know, we can, we'll continue to push the envelope there and certainly hear you. And for the capital pre-planning study, that wouldn't take place in 2031. We're going to begin that study sooner than that, in fact, imminently. So that will provide us some additional information. The way, you know, you can see that, you know, I know if folks from Carver were here, they would be telling us very much about their needs and the original holiday, which has been shifted. You know, the needs are great across our county at our schools. And so really trying to prioritize them, both based on age, but also based on condition and other things that we really are able to dig into deeper with that pre-planning facility study, which is why we don't simply say, you know, you had a renovation here and you're this old and prioritize our schools that way. That gives us a start. That's how we begin to chunk them in these timelines. But then we actually, once we get through that study, we can prioritize them a little more. That's how the bond list was determined. That's how the schools were determined for that list. And as you say, if funding's finite and we have to be responsible with what we have, and this would potentially be the next set of bond projects you see going across the top. But as we begin to study those remaining schools, we'll be able to know more about the condition of the facility related to modern teaching and learning, and that may continue to shift and adjust as we know and learn more.
Well, and that's why I brought it up. Since, since it was listed here and you mentioned it, I was curious as to the timing of this study and, and what's coming. But I would, you know, also maybe recommend that we look at meals tax project dollars. We look at ways to achieve what we need to achieve to honor that program in, like you said, and be a little bit innovative with, with getting things done, but probably, I would think meals tax is the way to possibly.
Meals tax is.
Well, we'll talk about that another day, but yeah.
You know, certainly, there are ways. And I think, you know, about $4 million in investments at Rolfe and other schools, both from meals tax sources and otherwise, to improve, I think, the office carpet last year. So we're certainly making sure, yeah, the above and beyond, the bigger capital stuff comes from that valuable meals tax money, and that's what gives us the ability to redo lighting in schools and fix up parking lots, repaint buildings. So, and, you know, we're really creative and good at leveraging our partnerships and grants and those sorts of things when it comes to particularly innovative teaching and learning. So I think there's a great opportunity to do some really special things, and we'll keep you posted and certainly hear your energy and commitment and second that around making sure the spaces match the programming.
I appreciate that. And again, you know, my mind is just forward-thinking, and I think that it's wise because what we're putting into Henrico County and with the help of our government, we're bringing things to our students because we're listening and we're learning, and we want to implement it well. But there's a certain period of timeframe that you have to get students invested and families invested, or we're going to continue to see a shift from specific areas to other areas, not just because of the programming, but it's looking like the place they want to be in. And I don't want my colleagues in the areas they serve to continue to be overcrowded. I certainly, while my schools are not at capacity, not the majority anyway, it's critically important to understand that the programs that we have also feel and look like where they want to be, which is why I'm equally excited about Queakuson.
Right.
Because all of our families will get to see this phenomenal building that is deserving. But it's deserving everywhere. So I am so happy and so pleased that we're moving forward and we're doing it collectively. So I'm grateful. So thank you for that, Reverend Cooper.
I just want to say, you know, I take pride in the fact that Henrico County, a few years ago, made sure that we built two new high schools simultaneously on both sides of the county at the same time. Ms. Ogden and myself and the other three at the time were privileged to, in one week's timeframe, dig holes in the ground for Holiday, Highland Springs, and Tucker. And I'll say, there was a conversation prior to that where we were looking at possibly purchasing the old Best Products building for Tucker. And there was a very robust conversation, which I'm now excited that's going to become Green City, the biggest eco-district on the East Coast, in the Fairfield District. So I want to say that we do do that. And, you know, the challenge of the CIP conversation every year is because each of us. I remember Ms., our chair with Glenn Allen and the CTE Center that we're building in Hermitage, we've had this discussion. So this discussion, I just wanted to make it clear that we do, I feel that we do do that in Henrico because, again, we sat there and we made it clear, we're not building a new Tucker without a new Highland Springs, and we did it. And so we do do those things. So we will continue, I hope, to make sure that we're equitable in looking at how we do these projects. We have buildings in the east and west that are the same age-old. The reason that we have Henrico and that we have Verina and we have a Brooklyn is because at that period, they built open schools, which we know now we probably should not have done. But if you look at the, you look at Deep Run, you look at Glenn Allen, you look at Tucker, you look at Highland Springs, the same footprint, but just differentiation inside the building. That's, that's four high schools that have the same footprint. You look at Wilder, you look at Hunger Creek. So I just want to say to the public that, you know, I think that we have done it, and I think that we probably will continue to do it. I mean, we all have that. So I just want to say that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Ms. Ogden, do you have more to say?
Yeah, I got so derailed with this. But I do have two things. Where are we with security vestibules? I'm just curious, is this is a.
Will you finish up those projects?
They're all finished. Okay, thank you. Because I got to ask that the other, I wasn't sure if we had still some in progress or not, but they're done.
Yes, ma'am.
Wonderful. But the conversation we had before, and I told you, and we'll bring it up again, is Colonial Trail and Rivers Edge. And one of the reasons why it's not, we don't have that slide today, but the plan going to our bond projects, but the numbers that we just talked about with our capacity is why I am concerned about the placement of the West End Elementary School being out as far as it is. At this point, the way it is planned, it will not open until 2030. And we've got two schools. Now, Rivers Edge will receive some relief from Longan, but as we also just talked about, there are new developments planned in the Brooklyn, the northern part of Three Chopped and Brooklyn that are planned. And that's one reason why I think it would help the board in the future to, as Ms. Cancela brought up, to get information on what's coming down the road for, for projects and housing developments that go, that are going. But I've got several schools that are now looking at waiting at least seven years for, for relief. But I got an email yesterday, and I don't normally do this, but I got an email yesterday from a parent. It was very long, but I'm just going to read one little part of it. But basically, she says, "Relief cannot come fast enough for Rivers Edge Elementary. There are students that will go their entire elementary career in a two-fold school, which impacts their complete experience. The enrollment size is given as the reasons parents can no longer come to have lunch with their children. Music performances are recorded and emailed home to parents. Parents are not permitted to see performances live. Parent volunteers are so limited that room parents were completely eliminated at Rivers Edge Elementary years ago." I could go on and on. "With the new neighborhood that is currently being built near Rivers Edge, the problem is going to get much worse before the new buildings are even open. Something has to give much sooner than later. I am so disheartened that these precious elementary years have been so impacted by the overcrowding and school leadership decisions. It just gets worse every year." And that's from a parent. And like I said, I just got this yesterday, but this is the thing that I hear over and over from parents in that area. And I think as we go forward, Mrs. Cancela is going to start to hear this more from the Springfield Park community that is now in.
Ms. Cancela brought it to the Henrico School Board before she was on the board.
I know, I know.
Because it happened at Glenn Allen Elementary. Then we got the addition, and the kids that are seniors, right? This moment at Glenn Allen High School have been honestly overcrowded in schools, over 100% capacity since kindergarten. So thank you, Ms. Ogden. Point well taken.
And so I think this is an ongoing problem in this area, and as those new housing developments go in, this is, yes, we're getting a rebuild, and I think that will be a great help. But my fear is, is that with the development, the problem will still continue. We're now at trailers at Rivers Edge, we're at trailers at multiple schools in that area, and I'm just not quite sure it's going to be enough that will relieve the overcrowding that exists. And so, but that's what's happening, and that's from a parent who boots on the ground. This is what she sees, they can't even go have lunch with their kids. And so I just hope that as we go forward and the bond projects come on and that we, we look. on and that we, we look at these capacity issues that really do affect the children in those schools. And I don't have much more, like Reverend Cooper said, our time is winding down to advocate. So we'll do it as long as we can. But the next person who sits in this chair is going to hear the same thing I've been hearing. And I just want to be sure that we don't forget that at the end of the day, the decisions that we make affect a child sitting in a seat and their overall school experience, whether it's at Rolf with an Innovation Center, whether it's at a school where they can't, their parents can't even come see them perform in a, in a, in a, in a program. But I think we've just really got to look at this. And I know that we've passed the bond referendum, and I'm excited about those projects to come. I just hope we can move them closer, as close as we can to relieve the overcrowding that is there. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. Mrs. Shea?
Thank you. I had most of my comments tied with the membership. So I just have a very few. Just a reminder, what we're agreeing to today is this year's CIP that we're sending forward. So that first slide, Mr. Pritchard, was very helpful. This is what we are voting on today. I think the long range, December, thank you, thank you, Ms. Cancela. This is what we're devoting on in December. The long range planning, very important. These conversations are very important. I think it's prudent for us to be having those throughout the year, right? And not just when we have our membership numbers first come out. But I think these are our long-term conversations that we can continue throughout the year, particularly when we have new colleagues. We will miss both of you dearly. But as we have new colleagues coming onboard, literally, that we can sit down with them and talk about what they've heard. As they've, I mean, they've been going door-to-door. You know, they've had a lot of time in community conversations. And so, Dr. Cashwell, I would like to carve out structured time kind of throughout the year to be massaging this long-range planning, especially as the pre-planning study comes back. That's really informative. We have a process that we use that involves the results from those pre-planning studies. That's how, as Ms. Atkins noted, it's not just about capacity. It's also about building condition and building function and all of those things, which is what the pre-planning study looks at. And I support our process. I think that is how we make sure that we can direct our limited funds where they are most needed, when they are most needed. They're never there fast enough. But as we plan things out, and so I just wanted to, you know, just echo, remind everybody that what we're specifically looking at approving is this one slide. And then the request to Dr. Cashwell to continue these conversations with Mr. Pritchard, our new planning team, as we look at strategies going forward, reports going forward, that sort of thing. I think that's a much more nuanced and much more complicated discussion than we can cover in any single, in any single board meeting.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Mr. Pritchard, I have a question. So when I look at CIP, right, it's an estimate. And then I look at perhaps the bids. The board approves, right, certain proposals put before us. What happens, for example, if something were to cost, it was on the CIP for $10 million, right? But then the bid came in and it was actually lower, maybe at around $6 million. What happens to that other $4 million?
Well, it sits in a reserve, and we go back, and there are things that are added into the projects that normally don't. Other costs start to go up. If there's other things that are needed within that project, they pull from that money and pay for it that way.
Okay, so till the end of the project, it would probably stay in the kitty, if you will. And then if it's not used on that particular project, which may be rare, right, for it not to be used, then it would probably go towards other projects during this same calendar year, period, perhaps?
Correct. Yes, within the same category of spending. CIP funds would stay within that and go to the very next project as needed.
Okay. Well, thank you. Thank you for the clarity there. And then I just want to just shout out, these are not, not CIP items. They're certainly not bond items. But I have mentioned that the paint in Dumbarton, I'd like to have looked at. And then Roscoe and I, when I was still the board member of Lakeside Elementary School, and then, and then you got it, of course, it was, the meals tax were frozen. But I would like to say out loud, Lakeside Elementary, that hadn't even had a reno for 30 years, it needs some paint, please. Reverend Cooper, you agree with that? Thank you so much. And then today's presentation for the, our new middle school program, I'd just like to highlight, once again, the middle school engagement, right? The middle school engagement cliff, mentioned last, at last meeting. The, the learning labs slash field houses across all of our middle schools that I look forward to discussing with my colleagues as middle school engagement really is a topic today. So I just want to remind, and that's not CIP funding, you know, or bond funding. But I just want to keep it on the radar, since we're talking money today. Anyway, thank you so much, Mr. Pritchard. Dr. Cashwell?
Noted. All right, thank you. All right, the next series of items are policy reviews that we'll be seeking approval for in December. The first batch are all related to proposed revisions in the career and technical education program arena. And the first one is a proposed policy change, updating language and incorporating pieces of retiring policies that have been noted in your summary document. And that is related to revisions to policy P-7-10-001, Career and Technical Education Program Operations.
Board members, any questions or comments on this policy? Dr. Cashwell, next item.
All right, the next item is related to a review of the unchanged policy, P-7-10-002, Cooperative Education. No recommended changes here, but again, it was covered in the review of this batch of related policies.
Board members, any comments or questions on this item? Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
Okay, next is the board's consideration for retirement of policy, P-7-10-003, Competency-Based Education, as it's no longer relevant.
Any questions as to this no longer relevant policy? Thank you so much, board members. Next item, Dr. Cashwell.
Next item is also proposed retirement, and that's of policy, P-7-10-004, Career and Technical Student Organizations.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Dr. Cashwell.
All right, the next one is a review of unchanged policy, P-11-03-006, Henrico County Vocational Technical Education Foundation Incorporated.
Any questions or comments here, colleagues? Hearing none. Next item.
All right, next item proposes revisions to policy, P-7-13-003, Length of the Class Period. And this allows the school system to be in alignment with state guidance and take advantage of new flexibility provided by the state.
Colleagues, any comments or questions on this policy? Next item.
All right, next item, we have Mr. Wack coming forward for a review of budget updates for our current fiscal year. I know it seems strange to be bringing forward a budget update this far into the school year and particularly into the fiscal year. But as you know, the state budget was in flux for quite some time. And so we just want to provide you an update related to the state budget and where we landed once that was finalized. Mr. Wack?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Cashwell. This afternoon, I'd like to walk through changes that took place in the state budget over the course of recent weeks and months, and how it is impacting Henrico County Public Schools. And this follows the release of details behind our state aid for education the evening of October 12th, which explains kind of the tardiness here. These pie charts illustrate the major revenue categories of our adopted general fund budget. We can see that the state share of our budget increased slightly to 54.4% in the current year. Today's presentation will focus on the approximate $354 million in state revenue that was included in the fiscal year 2024 budget that was approved by the Board of Supervisors in April and by the school board in May. There was significant, a significant amount of back and forth this past year between budget proposals made by the governor and then developed separately by the House and Senate. When compared to our fiscal year 2024 adopted budget amount of $354 million in state general fund revenue, the House version was slightly higher by 2.9 million, with the Senate version being much higher, with 27.9 million additional. After a lack of agreement between the House and the Senate, the skinny budget that was initially approved would have only provided about $2.6 million less than what was included in our adopted budget. The final state budget added about $25.6 million to the skinny budget, providing about $377 million to HCPS. This left about $23 million available for potential supplemental appropriations that could be considered by the Board of Supervisors. When looking at that $25.6 million for HCPS that was ultimately added to the skinny budget, it essentially came down to three major funding components. About $17.49 million was included for what was initially described as flexible spending per pupil. These funds were targeted for addressing learning loss and the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act. Another $5.94 million provides an increase to the state share for school support position. This essentially restored funding that had been removed from the baseline state budget in prior years for positions that we had been fully supporting with local funds. Finally, $2.14 million was included for the state share of raises provided towards positions covered by the standards of quality. Ultimately, the state budget supports 7% of the 8.2% raises given to those employees. We are appreciative of the local support that allowed the historical 8.2% raises be given to our staff. On September 7th, the Virginia Department of Education raised, released the 2022 to 23 test results and announced the All-NVA initiative. At that time, VDOE recommended that all school divisions allocate the flexible spending per pupil included in the fiscal year 2024 state budget as follows. 70% should go for high-dose tutoring and learning loss, which is about $12.25 million for HCPS. Another 20% should be used to implement the Virginia Literacy Act, which is about $3.5 million. And 10% should go towards a response to chronic absenteeism, or about $1.75 million. So prior to the October release of the final details of the state budget, the Board of Supervisors appropriated a portion of the $23 million in additional state revenue that was available. At the board's September 26 meeting, $5.68 million was added to our general fund budget, and this went primarily for safety and security. So given this information, we'd like to highlight our next steps moving forward. Now that we are able to confirm that we have another $17 million in additional state funds available, we plan to request that this pass-through revenue be appropriated to our fiscal year 2024 general fund budget by the Board of Supervisors. Their next series of budget amendments will be introduced on November 28th for approval after a public hearing that will be scheduled on December 12th. This will allow HCPS to use the state aid for education as it was intended, so we can implement the All-NVA initiative as required by the Commonwealth. So that includes my brief overview, and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wack. I'm going to start to my left. Mrs. Shea, any questions or comments?
You very tactfully stated about the length of time that it took the state to come up with their budget. That was very tactful. I don't think I have, I'm really thankful that we have such a financially smartly, that's not grammatically correct, but such a financially well-run county that we're able to start the year, move on with our budget without being on pins. And, I mean, we wanted to know what this outcome was, but it didn't impact, the lack of the state, the state's lack of ability to agree and send us a budget did not hold us up at all in our ability to serve students for the last three months, right? And that is an incredible thing to be able to say as a locality, that we have the reserves, we have the funds, that we're able to, even when the state's not getting done what they need to get done, we are getting done what we need to get done. And I'm incredibly proud of that. I'm glad to see that they eventually allocated as much or more than we budgeted for. Looking forward to getting the rest of those pass-through funds. That's all.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Shea. Ms. Ogborne?
Mr. Wack, if you don't mind, just go to that slide, the September budget amendment, that one. So what we're going to request is the remainder of the 23 come to us so that we can do the All-In as it's intended. I mean, do we know much yet about how that money, about how we're going to do? Do we have a plan yet, or is that in development?
I'm happy to speak to that.
Okay.
In order to receive the additional state aid, we were required to submit a plan to the VDOE that detailed how we would spend it in alignment with the required percentages for All-in Virginia. We did submit our plan to the VDOE. It was approved. And thus, we are sharing with you our plans to request the money. It would only be made available had we submitted and had a plan approved. Yes.
And so, all I'm curious about is if the board could get an update on those plans and how we will achieve the goals, because I'm already being asked, how's the money going to be spent? And so as part of that, it would be really great if we could get that.
Yep, we're happy to share.
But, you know, I appreciate the fact that, like Ms. Shea said, you were very polite in the delay in talking about it, because, I mean, we've all been waiting, everybody has been. But I think it's kudos to Dr. Cashwell and to the manager and the Board of Supervisors that we've been able to keep going. And, because there are not as many, there are some counties that weren't so lucky, that they really did have to make major cuts in order to survive the last few months. So thank you for all your hard work for that. But, and I also appreciate the update.
Thank you so much, Ms. Ogborne. Miss seconds.
Well, I also want to share in the pride of being a part of a division that continues to work in spite of what may seem gloomy. It really is magnificent to be a part of that. And I just wholeheartedly believe it's because we're children-focused. And I did have another question, because regarding the All-In tutoring, I also understand that one of the options are for other tutoring organizations, they are able to provide their services to school systems. So I'm actually, I went to Governor Youngkin's meeting on All-In tutoring. And I was very curious, and I'll just read it to make sure I get it right. However, one of the things that was shared was that tutoring facilities can contact the school division and provide tutoring to our students. I want to learn more about that. Are you aware of that? And what does that mean for our division?
Happy to share and will, to Mrs. Ogborne's point, provide the board details related to our tutoring plans. But generally, yes, there was some flexibility given to how local school systems would expend their dollars. It's very clear in the guidebook or playbook that we were provided, that we understand that most often, the person who can provide the most impactful tutoring is the teacher who works most directly with the student. So we started first with that preference and offered funding to our schools to be able to pay staff to provide the tutoring, whether it be before school, after school, or during school, make sure that we're accounting for planning time or any missed planning time in order to meet that requirement, but wanted staff within the school to be able to do that. A number of our schools, because we've been tutoring before All-In was a requirement, do leverage, whether it's retired teachers or outside individuals, to come in as paid tutors. And they're still doing that, and they can continue to do that as a part of this plan. But our plan doesn't call for using a third-party contractor to come in and tutor at this time. We have used and continue to use university instructors for some of our tutoring needs at the secondary level. All-in tutoring requirements are specific for grades three through eight. So our schools have developed plans to meet the students who fall within the thresholds identified by the state, and it's happening in-house at our schools, based on plans our school teams developed, and does leverage at times, like I said, maybe retirees or employees who come in as volunteers, but largely are our own staff and teachers working with students with whom they're familiar and have a relationship with.
I'm very pleased to hear that, because we have been offering tutoring sessions. And you can offer as many tutoring sessions as you like and resources, but we certainly would need families and parents to participate to bring students to the tutoring. And so I think that one of the things that we are continuing to learn from... I think that one of the things that we are continuing to learn from and do well is provide those services. We have an entire family and community engagement department that has been working to ensure that we provide resources. We have the Oak Avenue complex specifically in my district. But in every district, there are opportunities to learn more. And what this will do will increase that. But I also want to make sure that we are very level-headed in understanding that with some of the restrictions that are placed on this funding, that because we have this money, it doesn't automatically mean in the next 72 hours that it's available. This is going to take some time. It's going to take a tremendous amount of effort. Even with offering the opportunity to our staff, it does not equate to being able to provide the services to everyone. And so for me, I just think making sure that we are clear that where we are, in my opinion, and please keep me honest, is that we're in an infancy stage here. And we're going to have to learn, we're going to have to figure it out. But it is not, in my opinion, something that's going to be quick. And so as we get questions, because I am getting those questions around, well, what does transportation look like, since we're offering tutoring? Will this funding allow for additional vans in order to pick kids up and take them to the tutoring? So there's many, many questions around this. It's in the very beginning stages, because we're just getting the Calc tool. I probably shouldn't have said that. So I want us to be patient with this. It is extra, and we want to be thoughtful in how we disseminate it. So that's, those are my remarks regarding All-In tutoring.
Thank you so much, Ms. Atkins. Dr. Cashwell, do you have a comment?
Just simply that you're right, plans are still underway. And while much tutoring has been taking place and is taking place, All-In is an expanded version of that, and schools have developed their plans. I would just say, if any family has a question, please reach out to your teacher or your school, because plans are unique to each building. And in some cases, there may be after-school options. We have provided funding for the transportation, if that's what they chose. So thank you.
Thank you so much, Reverend Cooper. Did you have anything to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Wack, for this update on the 2024 budget. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Wack. That's all we had.
Thank you.
All right, and that concludes items for me.
Thank you so much, Dr. Cashwell. Board members, the next item on our agenda this afternoon is unfinished business. Is there any? Hearing none. Then item 13.01, is new business? Is there any new business, board members, to discuss? Hearing none. Well, then the last item on this afternoon's work session is the announcement of meeting dates. The next meeting date will be in about an hour and a half here at New Bridge, and it will be our monthly meeting for the month of November. After this evening, the school board's next meeting will be on Thursday, December 14, 2023, with a work session beginning at 1:00. We'll also host a public input session on the annual financial plan at 5:30 p.m., followed by a monthly meeting beginning at 6:30 p.m. that evening. Please know that meeting times may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.